President Trump.
And for the in-person
Zoom and for the in-person boardroom. Hi, Zoom attendees. If you can hear this, can one of you please raise your hand? We're doing some tests.
We're. And we've got. And we're also talking.
Maybe.
I'm trying to just.
Maybe it's something there.
Is the light from there affecting?
Well, no, it's not.
This is getting all the other parties. All the instances on their. It's more than. More than. Can we try it? Would someone?
Now, can you start one more time?
Yeah.
Is it with the volume mic?
Yeah.
Testing. If anyone on the Zoom can hear this, please raise your hand.
See. No. Yeah. It's the.
The.
Welcome to.
We've got.
But.
We're trying to.
You're. So that's just. So.
I think. Yeah.
I'm listening. Yeah. They're trying to. And if you want me to give a little more than.
I think.
You'll be down.
There's everyone.
They did, but my. Um. We don't start, but of course. Uh. I don't know.
Ready?
You want to do my.
Turn everybody. What are we asking?
One word.
Okay. Should I get started and do without do it without this, correct?
Correct. So you unmute yourself now to speak.
Okay. Cool.
So to avoid the echo, we're going to have to unmute to speak. But when someone from the Zoom is speaking, it's going to come out of our volume. And you're you're going to have to be muted because that will cause the echo. So if there's someone on the Zoom speaking, you're going to have to make sure you're muted.
Okay. That'll be great. Okay. Hey, hey, can I ask? First up? Um, can I have another listen here? Somebody could. They they can hear me. Yeah, you can do it. Um, all right, we're gonna I'm gonna give this as a roll call here. I'd like to call the order. Um, I'd like to call the order. Director of Board of Education, please. For people who are at least 2021 at 6:00 or 6:15. If everyone in the boardroom please rise. I'm finally. To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Andy. Thank you to everyone in person tonight. We really appreciate the great flexibility this evening. And we are attempting on first only to break forward moving. And a special thank you to Director of the Department of Defense, Senator Hallow, who has been tirelessly contributing to this this action for all of our stakeholders to this sale. Uh, so thank you very much. Um, because we do have in-person individuals and we do have virtual individuals who are in public comment from the boardroom. We are always starting students. We're going to be going with students in-person, then students on the team. Then we're going in, um, in-person, uh, maybe safe orders, and then the moving in safe orders. Um, and if any have in the room, about a while since we've been in early March of last year. And we have included this, but. Um, the yellow form is if a student would like to come to public comment, they fill this out. And either it's a buddy or the white form is for them and it is not a student that would like to see. Uh, the meeting. And and we can have the buddy who would want that to drive her. Um, because we are partially virtual, I'd like to report the policy comment. A member of the call would like to go to where you agree with our agreement. Or if I said you guys don't need time, I don't want you to. Please, I'm just. The priority for this meeting on every topic. The first call of the presentation for special meeting. Will be limited to one half hour, 30 minutes normally, and really for gendered. The second call of the presentation for research, often pretended to be on a tour of a gender comment. Individuals of specific orders should take into consideration the goals of time and privacy. Public participation shows that help community can be appreciated in special events. If it's a member of the system to leave or to. Um, I would like to ask if we have any, uh, forums or students who would like to take their. Seeing none, uh, you will need to zoom. Yeah, we are. And then for students that would like to, um, speak, I don't have three minutes. Please take the raise your hand. And just to remind you of the video, I was saying, I have that. Seeing none, I'm going to in-person, whether you can work with. Uh, are there any individuals that. To speak or buddy, have you received any white? Hi, thank you. Uh, anyone on the Zoom, if you are not a student but would like to speak, please use the raise your hand feature. Okay, seeing none, we will move on to our first agenda item, which is, um, the approval of our agenda. Um, I'd like to entertain a motion, please, to approve the agenda as printed. Items may be added or deleted from the meeting agenda and/or the order of items may be changed at the request of an individual board member or the superintendent. The agendas must be approved before proceeding further. Um, can I entertain a motion, please, to approve the agenda as printed?
Submove.
Thank you, Dennis. Motion and second?
Hi.
All right. Thank you, Jenny. Um, because we are in a hybrid format, we're going to need to do a roll call vote. And Dennis. Perfect. Um, tonight, we're going to begin with trustee Valenti.
Hi.
Thank you, Doug. Uh, trustee Votzheim?
Hi.
Secretary Eustah?
Hi.
Thank you, trustee Gerby.
Hi.
Thank you, Vice President McFay.
Bye.
Thank you, trustee Miller.
Hi.
Thank you, President Stubben. I motion carry seven zero. Um, moving on to our scheduled reports, our first is our DDI Leadership Coalition presented in part by interim superintendent Dr. Lodge and Dr. Shuko. Would you like to take it away?
Okay, I'm going to unmute. Turn off my volume. Okay. First off, I want to say that that this leadership council has really made a ton of progress. We're in a much better place in the district because of their efforts. And I want to make sure that I'm recognizing everybody who has played a role in the leadership coalition. Brian Marl, our mayor, Dante Warren, Heather Finch, Karen Brown, Tiffany Alexander, Terry Pickett, who's present here, Leah Perez, one of our students, Lauren Hornberger, and also a number of people who are actually in the audience getting ready to present. And that's Alex Shuko, who is our district leader in with this work. Shannon Washington is here, Bridget Sparks, Melissa Zexic, and Corey Balo. And I just want to say they've done such a great job setting the vision, mission, and establishing group norms. Um, really focused in three major areas that we're going to talk to you about tonight. And that's the structure, systems, policies, and practices, safety, healing, empowerment, learning, curriculum, and assessment. And I'm really excited to hear about how this will transition to the DDI Advisory Committee as well. So the future is really bright for this group. And it turns over to Dr. Shuko and the rest of the DDI Leadership Coalition to give us a great presentation.
Sir Alex, the mic stays off and you'll unmute that computer. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Board of Education. Thank you very much for having us. Um, it's really an honor to be here tonight to present the DDI Leadership Coalition to all of you. Um, I would like to, at this time, welcome up the members of the coalition who are here with me as they'll be joining for tonight's presentation. So remember, if you want to come up, we'll take our turns going through the slides. As Dr. Lodge had shared, um, we do want to recognize the members of this leadership coalition. And we certainly thank them for their time and their efforts, especially over the past couple of years. We've made a lot of progress together, and we are truly excited to share that with you tonight.
Good evening. I'll be talking a little bit about the vision, mission, and our definitions. And those of you who've been around me for about three years, um, the groundwork was laid for this starting in 2018 with the original DEI committee, where, um, that committee conducted a great deal of research looking at frameworks from universities, other public school systems, even healthcare um, and community groups to create a vision, mission, and definitions of DEI that would fit Celine's strategic framework. And so, uh, fast forward to 2020, the DILC conducted its own review and revision of the mission, vision, and the definitions. Um, so I just want to point out a few key things about each of those. Um, the vision is really in line with, um, the learner profile in so many ways. The idea here is that, uh, the district really believes, and the DILC believes, that their perspectives lead to better outcomes, and so that's part of the vision. Um, the mission is to continue to align with the strategic framework and the canvas and to become an even more inclusive and equitable educational environment. Do I just miss anything? Thank you. Good. All right. So it took us what seems like months to come up with these definitions in 2018. And then it took us a couple of weeks to, um, make our adjustments for this year. I'm not going to read these definitions, but I will point out a few things about them. Um, as the DILC will become the DEI Advisory Committee, these definitions will be living, which means they'll live on the website, but they will also be up for revision as the landscape, uh, the social landscape will continue to evolve. Um, but one of the things I want to point out is in the definition of diversity, that is not a limited list of identities. So we we want to obviously talk about things that are, you know, in the news. Perhaps like today might be race, but we also want to look at some other, um, identities. And we can add to this list again as the, uh, landscape changes. And then, um, equity, again, is really looking at policies, practices, and constantly view and revision. Inclusion, we want to, um, not just focus on, well, we want to especially focus on those who are marginalized, but recognize that inclusion means everybody. And so that's, uh, that's kind of the foundation of the DILC, and we hope it's also ported over to the DDI Advisory Committee.
Uh, likewise, uh, we have established group norms for the DILC, um, which are also living and can change as we move into the Advisory Committee. Um, and I'm not going to read all of them. I just want to draw out a couple. Uh, the one is, um, maintaining a brave space. That's to tell our stories, to learn about others, and to ask questions. We don't know everything, and we're going to make mistakes or say the wrong thing. Um, followed by being present and actively listening to one another. We all have different backgrounds with different experiences and different reasons for being a part of the team. And we're going to listen and learn as we all want to help make our community a better place. Uh, here are our five big ideas. Um, they're, um, summarized into five areas of focus. And as you've mentioned earlier, we have split into three subcommittees. And we are focusing on, number one, the structure, systems, and policies. Number two, safety, healing, and empowerment. And number four, DEI learning and curriculum. Next, we're going to give some highlights from each of our three subcommittees.
Thanks, Cory. Um, so the past six months, I've been working with a subgroup of three other, um, DILC committee members on the structure, systems, policies, and practices objective from the district's DEI work plan. There's a number of success indicators associated with this objective, and we've specifically been, um, digging into the three that you see on the screen right here. Um, so let me just give you examples of what that's looking like. Um, but this this work is quite broad and quite extensive, as you can tell just from the title of the of the working group. So the first one is the DKI declaration. So we've developed a declaration statement for diversity at putting in inclusion, which is intended to be used as a guide for the district. And our hope is that the district will openly endorse and adopt this declaration district-wide. Secondly, we've been working closely to, um, implement strong, clear, uniform district-wide policies. Um, more specifically, we're working to ensure that statements such as the district's current, um, hate speech acts language from the student handbook is being implemented district-wide. And we're also looking to ensure that there are appropriate guidelines for enforcement and district response. And then thirdly, um, we're really focusing on ensuring that there's support for marginalized staff. So we really believe that inclusive hiring and retention policies and practices are vital to our success. And so we'll be working to ensure that there are support structures in place for staff members. And more recently, we've been looking for ways to support the district's Bias and Trauma Response Plan by benchmarking the response plans of other organizations and looking to identify opportunities to update and further embed a response plan across the district. Um, so I'm going to turn it over to Shannon, and she'll talk a little bit about the next working group.
I'm back. So, uh, I keep working on the Safety, Healing, and Empowerment Committee with Terry Pickett, Tiffany Alexander, and Scott Grayden, but we all know and aren't known, so. So. So I'll just talk a little bit about two of the things we've worked on. The first is that middle strategy there, it talks about how students are given opportunities to use positive affirming, community-building language with each other. One of the things that we've looked at is creating a catalog or cataloging affinity groups and ally groups in the district. Every building has some culture and its own organizations. And so we're looking at really creating a catalog so that we can see what we have and what kids may still need. We are also looking at ways to streamline the organizations for adults, the equity teams and other things that adults participate in in the district so that we can see where there is overlap and where there can be collaboration. We have other things that we are working on, but we're hoping to get to those things as we port over to the advisory committee.
All right. My name is Bridget Sparks. I'm a teacher at the high school. And I've been working on the learning and curriculum committee with Tiffany, Heather, Cory, Steve, now Alex, myself. And we've identified four target areas: data gathering around impacts, strengthening, building equity teams, curriculum and assessment, and communication. So I'm going to highlight some of the work that we've been doing around these targets. First is an equity survey. We realized that we need to measure the impact of our DEI strategic framework action items. Unless we monitor different affinity groups' responses to our initiatives, we won't have a good sense of whether we're making strides or actually falling short. So we need a way to benchmark current perceptions and measure impact, which will ultimately inform native changes to the framework. So far, we've met with one company, but we are in the process of trying to find the right tool for our district. We are also working on building stronger equity teams with the help of the district instructional designers and Dr. Latch. We initiated the gathering of representatives from each building equity team, as well as an administrator, to start to meet regularly in order to identify and build our best practices. We are learning that some action plans are focused on relationship building. Some are more focused on classroom-level work. There's others that are looking at policy-level changes. And so now that we've initiated a conversation between the buildings, the next step is to identify the needs of these different teams so that we can help determine how to best support their individual and collective missions. In terms of learning and curriculum, we need to honor the cultures and identities of our global community here at Slane High School. And so we have a two-front approach to that. We need to support and hold accountable the teaching staff as it relates to this district goal. We've been working through the concept of better integrating our current teacher evaluation system to also reflect upon culturally responsive and inclusive practices. We've identified several areas in the Danielson Framework that explicitly talk about this, but we need to develop more explicit examples of professional development. We're currently identifying the tools that can be used for both teachers and administrators in this process. And then two, curriculum and assessment itself. We are currently bringing more diverse texts to the classroom. We've reached out to different buildings to see where we are with our current practices and have found that we have increased representation of affinity groups and reading and writing and images and choice activities, but the question is, what comes next? We're currently exploring ways to provide the staff with professional development that are struggling with integration in some of the domains that maybe don't at least seem like they lend themselves. But of course, they do. I think the math is one of those examples. And then thinking about our assessment practices too. And so one idea is talking about a current concept of feedback called ungrading and the possibility of a district-wide field study on that topic. And what this all brings me to is an idea of a strategic communication plan that pulls all these projects together. In order to more effectively implement these mentioned things, then we need to identify people that can help reach all of our stakeholders. Great. We look forward to this. And I've been in the district for 20 years teaching, and I'll tell you, I have more hope today than I've ever had. We have a long way to go, but I believe we're on the right path. So thank you for your time.
So as you can see, I think each of the entities, subcommittees, their work has been pretty extensive. And what they have shared with you here are just a few examples. But now I want to shift gears a little bit, talk about establishing the DEI Advisory Committee. And as you know, currently, this is a DEI Leadership Coalition. And so why the establishment of an advisory committee? Well, first, the need to have a more sustained effort with Board of Education policy. And I do know there is a second reading of the DEI policy tonight. This would then become an official Board of Education, or excuse me, a Board of Education committee. The focus, the mission, the vision of the current leadership coalition would continue. And this advisory committee would make recommendations on practice and policy, excuse me, practice and procedures. And then finally, in regards to the application process, that would be ongoing and would take effect after the DEI policy is formally adopted. And so that's the presentation that we have with you tonight. We'd be happy to take any questions that you'd want.
Jennifer, if there's any questions from Zoom, if you could just play your computer and bring a mic down so everyone here can hear them, so they won't hear it from a computer.
Generally, for presentations, we don't take questions from Susan.
Susan.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. Clearly, years, months of work, even through a pandemic, is to be very tremendous, and I really appreciate your diligent efforts in this really important work. Before we get to questions, I did just want to do an audio check with everyone on the Zoom to make sure that the podium was sufficient audio. Could you hear everybody? If a couple people can just raise their hand, that would be helpful. Okay, great. Carol Mount, you're going to appreciate that. Great. We will go to any trustees or Dr. Latch, if you would have any questions or comments for our group. Any comments or questions for the group? Susan?
Can't see anyone here. Here's another separate room.
So Jennifer, press to talk on your mic and bring it down, please.
What was that?
Hang on one second. I'm getting some instruction from Anna. Hang on here, Susan.
You should just press to talk on your mic and bring it down to your computer so the room can hear it.
Press this mic. Oh, okay. Sorry. Okay, Susan, I'm going to bring the mic down to my computer. Can you try talking now?
Hello?
Is that okay?
I think it's okay.
Okay, I think they can hear you. Okay.
Thank you all so much for presenting and collaborating that you all have been doing, working on. I'm personally super excited working on the policy committee and being part of establishing this in 2019 for the DEI Advisory Committee. I'm glad that we have a policy. And the DEILC has done fantastic work over the years, and I really appreciate it and do see that we are moving forward. Thank you.
All right, great. Thank you, Susan. All right. Anyone else? Yeah, Aramade?
So to the DEILC, thank you for acknowledging that the work you're doing is long, it's living, but it's working, and it's been more than two years of work. I love the fact that you identified the need to actively listen, and as a district, we need to do more of that and learn. I'm excited that we're codifying to allow us to stay in the progress that we've made thus far and that this initiative, over the last two years, is ongoing, and we're committed to it for years to come. I love the fact that we especially included the staff, because that was always missing out on faculty over the years. And then made a big effort to overstate the need for continuous improvement through surveys and evaluations. More importantly, finding the right tool for our district, because it's unique in what our needs are. And we can't, we cannot ignore the progress that we've made or the fact that we've been delivered an intentional vote. So I appreciate that work that we've done as we've evolved from a DEI committee to a DEILC. And actually, playing full circle to becoming an advisory committee for the development of all the stakeholders in our community. So thank you.
Thank you, Aramade. Thank you, Aramade. Thank you for the work that you've done on the DEI Leadership Coalition as well. Before coming on the board, we appreciate you. Jenny?
Do I also have to test the mic?
No, I'll just. Okay, okay, okay. Thank you again for your work. I know I've been following the work, but just recently this year, becoming more involved in the work here in Slane, although it is something that I seek to grow in daily, if not more than daily, moment by moment. So I am really excited about the work that this group has done and the momentum that we have moving forward, like Bridget. I think we were probably higher than a few years of one another, and I see a lot of hope and a lot of growth, which makes me excited for the staff and for the students now and in the future. A couple of things that I just wanted to highlight. I love that the group is paying close attention to the learner profile too and how that, how this work really is, for me anyways, I feel like this is central to the entire compass, that everything should be measured through the lens of, especially equity, but DEI. I also, Bridget, when we're talking about staff and accountability, I'm not sure if my colleagues know about the Danielson rubric, but that is the tool that most districts, especially most districts in our area, use to evaluate teachers. And you mentioned accountability, and I also hope that there's some safety in that, because we know that moving in this direction doesn't come without risks and that our peers and stakeholders and administrators can do the work of calling people in to embrace this work and to be a part of that. And finally, I know that this was something that we have mentioned before, but I know as we zoom in and zoom out. But I would love to encourage the Board of Education members to begin to normalize pronouns. And I know that Brad and Aramade have done this initiative before. But perhaps moving forward, you can go into your Zoom profile and make that a part of your name. And then perhaps it's something that we can even add to our name cards in here. And normalizing that for our students and for our faculty and our community so that it isn't something that calls people out. It is something that invites all of us to be a part of this district. Thank you. Thank you, Jenny. Appreciate your comments. Dr. Latch?
I did want to point out that it was brought up that it's really important to have students involved, which we completely agree. We have had students involved in the DEI Leadership Coalition.
We should hear you.
Is that it?
There you go.
I'll keep trying.
Is your mic off? Your table mic?
Yeah, table mic's off.
But you should, is anyone's mic on or anyone else's speaker on?
Maybe if the podium mic is turned off. Alex, can you hit off on the podium mic?
Alex, can you hit off on the podium?
Okay.
There you go.
All right, let's try that again. The importance of students being on the DEI Leadership Coalition. And we have students on, but one of the issues we've had is sustained support for those students coming to meetings, making sure that they're actively involved. So I do know that when the DEI Advisory Committee is formed, that's going to be a real concerted effort to make sure that we have student representation on an ongoing basis, because that's very important. We don't want to lose sight that we need to keep after that. Because what we've seen in the past is we get students involved, and then that sort of phases out. And we've got to do better to make sure that we have sustained student involvement as we move forward with the advisory committee. I just wanted to point that out.
Great. It makes you.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone in person and Zoom, learning along with us. We appreciate that. And Noah, I saw you taking mysterious notes during this comment section there about having students involved in DEI, so look forward to that. Michael, did you have?
Oh, briefly. Should I, what do I, am I muting?
So you unmute, and now I'm off.
No, it's not even working.
There.
Awesome, doesn't it? Okay. I just want to thank the three subcommittees for making actionable, achievable, doable, very clear goals. I noticed you didn't overwhelm us with too many goals. They were, and of course, they'll change over time, but they were all, they all seemed eminently doable. So I appreciate that. Something we can look forward to going ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Michael. I should also add too, the board probably knows it. There is a page on the slaneschool.org website, right, for the DEILC, so you can also see some of the previous work and committee members there. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions for our DEI presenters? Yeah.
I'll just say a word of thanks and appreciation for the work that is done here. I love listening and hearing the piece of it, being a learning group, being a living group, being something where it's going to engage the community. And I know it's a heavy lift, and it takes time and effort, and we hear you, and I just appreciate it. So thank you very much.
Great. Thank you. Thank you to all of the DEI committee members over the last couple of years. Thank you to our presenters tonight. We appreciate all of the hard work that we have done and the hard work that we continue to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Cory. Thank you very much, everybody.
Excellent. Moving on to our second scheduled report of the evening, we have our high school writing center, Jen Denzen, Isaac Smith, and Sophie Dubevoi. Excellent.
Jennifer, just so you know, Isaac is on Zoom, so if he speaks, it'll have to be the same thing.
Okay, great. I mean, Isaac's on Zoom. Dr. Latch, would you like to say anything?
I'm going to turn my volume up. Yeah, I just want to point out that when, a few years back, when Jen Denzen and her colleagues came to Principal Raff to envision this writing center, they had already done a lot of research. They were at Skyline High School. What does the writing center look like? They'd been to professional development. They took that on themselves. They then got students involved in that process, professional development. And now they have one of the best student-led run programs going in the Slane School. So that's tremendous work on your part, and incredible to see how this is helping our students. And it truly does embody the compass in terms of its, perhaps, as the best student-led operation we have going right now. So with that said, thank you all for presenting today.
Jen, just so you're aware, before we start, I don't have access to the media file that's in this, so whatever was going to play won't play on this, but we can share it with the board members.
Okay.
Okay?
All right. Good evening, Board of Education. Thank you for allowing us to be here and present about our wonderful writing center. My name is Sophie Dubevoi, and I will be co-presenting this presentation with Isaac Smith, who is here to help us virtually.
Yeah, I'm really grateful for the opportunity to give this new experience and get to see how you. Excellent, okay. So what is the writing center?
Just like.
And the consultants are all high schoolers. I've been through many of the classes that I've taken now. And the consultants have been nominated. And so can you go to the next slide, please?
Yes, I'll go to the next slide in one second. One minute, I think we're adjusting to audio, Isaac.
Excellent. Okay, so our mission, the S H S Writing Center mission is to promote positive change and growth and writing skills throughout our community, regardless of current proficiency or experience. So we're seeking to have all of our students, you know, like grades nine through twelve, regardless of their experience or proficiency in S H S. So now I'll kick it back over to Sophie.
All right. So just a little bit more as well coming to our center. The writing center is considered independent study that is taken by juniors and seniors at the high school level. We are located in the small corner at Help that is in the cafeteria. And as you can see by the pictures, we typically have two to five consultants per hour working in there, five hours for the day. We always have fun. It's a time to communicate through writing with other students that we're working with or a time to communicate with other consultants. One of the big events that we participate in is with Mr. Bolrath, an English teacher. One of the big events that we participate in is with Mr. Borath, an English teacher. And we help them with the Zine Fest. So this picture was taken for the Zine Fest of 2020 in the fall. We help them pass out their little booklets and help get the word out about their writing. And one of the other things that we do is we do advertise about the writing center a lot. We allow the students using it. And so one of the advertisements, ways that we do is through video. On the bottom, which you see, there are a few where consultants made a silly video that we sent out over social media and other platforms to get the student population notified about our writing center and all the events that we host. So some of the events that we host, we host a lot of events for students, and this is open to all grades, nine through 12. And we really want students, at the manual level of writing, to just participate with us in writing. And so some of the events that we host is during the holidays, right before winter break, we host the holiday hyco competition. A mad competition, but it's more of a, just what can you do with your writing? And during Valentine's Day, we do a little note, spread the love. Students will come to us and write a note to a friend or whoever they would like, and we pass them out to the students. For spending Heritage Month, we wrote some poetry and some short stories. One of the things we'll be discussing later is our Lit Mag. We produce a literature magazine at the end of every year. And for Seller Black History Month, we did, over social media, we would post an event or a person through writing that helped communicate their writing in the Black History Month. All right, so just accessing a writing center, we do, most of our work is done through online submissions. Students can submit drafts of the work through our website. You can just type it in onto Google saying the Celine, Celine Writing Center, and you will see our link to submit our online submissions. In a typical year without COVID, we would have in-person sessions. This is very limited right now due to hybrid, virtual, and whatever learning system we are in. But in a typical year with the teacher's permission, students will come to the Small Hornet Hub and they'll meet with us during the hour to help them revise and edit their work. And right now, we are still available before and after school to have sessions with students. This is access, this is accessible to all. And we just ask that students give us a 24-hour notice before coming in. And I will now walk you through what a student, if they choose to submit to the writing center, would look like. So the first step would be to access the Celine Writing Center website. And you're going to, yep, yep. And you're going to scroll down just a bit, and you'll see on the left side, we have this form that says Writing Center is a Synchronist submission. And you're going to fill out the form just as asked. It's going to be your name, email, type of writing, teacher, and so on. Next, you'll open your document. And just to be clear, we do not require students to have a full paper written. They could have like a draft, they could have an introduction that we would like us to look at. It's really open to anything. And so they would open their assignment, and they would click the share button on the right corner. Next, this window will pop up, and we need to get access to the link. So they would click the change link to everyone can view in the Celine Area Schools. And then you're going to change from the viewer to a commenter. And then you're going to copy the shareable link. And then in the form on the bottom, you're going to paste the form. And when you finish the form, we get a big spreadsheet with all of our work and all the info that you put in. And you will respond in one to two days.
Okay, excellent. So I'm going to talk about scheduling virtual appointments. This is something which we've been doing this year. Specifically because of COVID, we don't really have in-person appointments very much. So we've been using a software online, which is basically like Zoom and an in-person consultation mix. I don't believe that we've used it incredibly much. There have been some appointments, I think mostly it's been online submissions as the main way that students have gotten help from us. But basically, if you want to schedule a virtual appointment, you'll just start at the Writing Center website and then scroll down. And then you just go over onto the right side, you follow the link to the proper website, Writing Center Online. And then if it's your first time, you're going to want to register for an account. And then you just fill out the form to register for the account. It's pretty straightforward. At the end, you just click complete registration. And then what we'll see after that is that once students have registered for an account, they'll be able to actually log back into the software. So it's a little bit more complicated because they can't just like login directly. They have to make an account first. But after they have their sign-in, they're going to log in. And they'll be able to see like a grid of available appointments based on the hour in the Writing Center consultant. So then they'll click on an available appointment slot, they'll fill out the various fields on the form, and they'll click create appointment with various things such as like they specifically want to say that it's an online appointment as opposed to in-person or outside room. Create like as you would for it. And then students will receive an email confirmation afterwards. And then just about like five minutes before their appointment, students should log back in and then click on their appointment. And then click start a joint consultation from the pop-up window. And that'll take us into the video software, the video conference software. And yeah, so hopefully students have a wonderful appointment at that one.
Just some consultant data that was taken from this year. We have 59 Celine High School consultants that have completed the Writing Center. That's junior and senior year. We get over 230 plus asynchronous consultations with the online form. We have 45 synchronous consultants, and we usually give around 16 class presentations per year. So in-person sessions, when and where? As I said before, we are located in the Small Hornet Hub, which is written all over with the Writing Center. We are available at all hours of the day. As I said before, there are students every single hour working in there. And then we also host before and after school activities. And these activities include the Valentine's Day cards, poetry competitions, and et cetera.
Okay, so how do we actually help students? Well, obviously, our mission is to help students write good, more or less. That's kind of the first question. We accomplish this through giving advice, providing peer review, helping students make their piece unique, and also assisting with brainstorming. One of the coolest things about the Celine High School Writing Center is that for a few years now, we've been doing the Lit Mag or the Literary Magazine where we just collect like a whole ton of different pieces. They're in various formats, and it just becomes together in a really cool finished product. And so like the submissions can include essays, creative writing, poetry, artwork, photography, and even some music. Like it's in a paper format, and so even he had a music. But we actually had someone who submitted songs here, which we're actually going to have a video of that just in a little bit. And then there was a link for submitting as well. So this year's theme is distance. That can be like physical and metaphorical. It's especially appropriate with the pandemic, how we've been like distancing from one another. Some of the past themes you can see here are journey, dreams, and space. And it's a really cool cover art for those past winters. And so y'all don't have access to that file.
Just want to, I will share with the board. You can just talk, you can talk.
We're going to have an ad for the Lit Mag, but we might skip that for a second. But this was actually, we'll start here, a student, the high school senior, Shani. She's a class president, actually. She wrote a song. It was really cool, and we just had an advertisement about that. So thank you. Do we have any questions?
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, David. First of all, the presentation.
Thank you. First of all, the presentation was incredible. Just a fabulous, fabulous job of the presentation, walking us through steps, the graphics, everything, the Lit Mag, it was really great. So I can't wait to hear the song. I think the thing for me that I just pause when I'm watching this is this is what I took advantage of freshman year in college. And this is, and this is happening at our high school, and it's being run by students. And student-led, Dr. Latch is great, just a tremendous representation of the compass. So thank you very much.
Want to open it up to Vice President McFenner.
Thank you. I'm not sure if you covered this or not, but how does one become one of those elite 59 consultants? What rigorous process do they go through?
Yes, absolutely. So it is not a rigorous process at all. Their sophomore year around springtime, they will receive emails from Mrs. Denzen and Ms. Clark saying that, you know, they've been kind of looked at, and they would get an application for the Writing Center. And, oh, go ahead. Oh, okay, sorry. And the application includes your name, what you're doing in school, and you're submitting a short piece of writing. And especially this year, we put out advertisements for the application, and we've gotten many applications for it. And we're excited to welcome our new consultants next year.
That's excellent. So they're basically tapped. They're scouted.
Yes.
Is there a signing day? Anyone else? Yes, Jenny, go ahead.
I had a couple of questions, and I just wanted to say to Jen, the Denzens have endured the Millers this year. So your reputation at our household is stellar, and I'm not surprised to see this Writing Center be one of the things that you're doing and have it be such an incredible product for our students. I think sometimes the hardest piece, at least for the teenagers that I know, is taking the first step to utilize a resource like this. I think sometimes students feel like when they need, need support, sometimes it's not necessarily a need, but it's a, I want to do better. So I'm wondering how, I know you're saying, you said that you've advertised and that you've done some presentations. Are there any teachers who are collaborating with you to not encourage just students who need support, but all students? And then my next question too, that you might answer at the same time would be, is it just Celine School's writing, writing for school that they can submit to you? Or is it maybe like college or job applications or things like that?
I can actually take that question, both of those questions. So yeah, we've actually had really good experiences in the past with collaboration from teachers, like Mr. Borath.
Oh, we need to unmute so that everybody else can hear him. Sorry. Okay, Isaac.
Okay, is the audio? Can you just send it over?
Is the microphone on?
It's really fantastic. Collaboration of teachers in the past, like Mr. Borath. He's had his Zines class and his American literature class. So sometimes it's, I think, a requirement, submit an online submission or schedule a virtual appointment. And that's definitely given us something to do. Sometimes it gets a little busy. But I feel like that's been a good experience. And then also for your other question, yeah, we have received, I believe, like scholarship essays and stuff where it's not like directly for like a school class, but it's instead like more personal. I believe that we could present those and try to help with those.
Thank you. Yes, I was wondering about. Sorry, sorry, sorry. The collaboration, I know it could, it's a balance, right? That you could get too many submissions for the 59. But also, we want to make sure that students are feeling comfortable. And I think, I'm sure, maybe you can speak to this, but I'm sure once students use the resource, they're back. Thank you.
Thank you. Aramade?
So it's really nice that you have a writing center. Writing is a love art, and just like math, it takes practice and years to craft it. For the first step, figuring out what you want to write. But more importantly, how soon can we get our younger ones to sign up for this? Because I know you have a lot of avid writers and excited and imaginative ones that are going to middle school. Because I'm sure they could really take advantage of this from you and actually of what you're doing.
So we can make the decision. That was a good call. So yes, we do have a lot of movement, especially at the middle school level. So this year has been a little bit challenging for a lot of reasons. And because of that, our work for integrating a writing center at the middle school has been put on hold a little bit. But we were in the process last year of introducing this model at the middle school so that middle school students would be able to assist, not just in the middle school building, but also the other buildings on that campus, which was a really exciting idea. So we are moving in that direction and hoping to get that going. Students, any student in Celine Area Schools can submit to the Writing Center because all you need is a Celine email address in order to do so. We've also partnered with, there is the Washtenaw County Writing Center, and it actually combines all of the writing centers from around the county. There are lots of writing activities and weekend events. Most recently, there was one about standing up and writing for advocacy and what is being an advocate in your writing look like. And so we get information about those events out through our partnership with them. So lots of opportunities for students outside of high school.
And I mentioned this, as a parent, we've had to stick together several writings from Mrs. Bolton, who insisted on making those kids write persuasive lessons. And Mrs. Kelly, who advocated for self-didacting advocacy. They could really benefited from getting some feedback from the high school. So Zoom makes things so much easier, so the opportunity exists for us to encourage those little writers so that when they get to high school and have to write those essays, they're more comfortable with it and mom doesn't have to help so much. Thank you so much for what you're doing.
So also, just a little aside as well, is that while we're also working with some of the younger students, we also have a partnership with Celine's Senior Center. And so our Senior Center is running a writing program, and we've partnered with them and made some lasting relationships with them. They're also launching their first Lit Mag this year. And they're using our Celine High School DIT program, and our students are designing their Lit Mag. And so there's interaction between our students and the seniors in the senior writing center. So that's really cool, really cool.
Great job.
That's fantastic. That's absolutely fantastic. It would be great to do something with the little ones too, right? I know especially once they get up to third grade, they're doing video announcements and putting things with green screens and all sorts. So they probably latch on to videos like that. I did see Dr. Shu go nodding during the work. I know good stuff is coming for our middle school, middle school Hornets as well.
Let's see, Noah, yeah.
So I've used this center a number of times. My teachers, wonderful English teachers and chemistry teacher have all encouraged us to use. Use the center to get our writing. And all the feedback I've gotten has been amazing. I also know a number of the consultants there, and they're extremely dedicated to their work and excited to help people. I'd just say it's one of the best, as Dr. Latch said, programs we have at the high school. So thank you for all your work.
Just want to give an next student testimony. Trying to recruit others. Anyone else? Yeah, Dennis.
This is particularly important to me. My day job as an attorney, I've seen court cases hinge on just simply a misplaced comma in the form of a tactical right. And at the risk of sounding really old, I've been worried about how we, now we communicate via texts and tweets and chirps or whatever they may be, that we are losing that ability to write very precisely. And I see it even in my profession, where certain documents are not as tight as they should be. And very often, that's how court cases get determined, based on that. So anything to improve this, the writing, is great for me. Thank you.
Trustee Valenti, lol. That's all.
That actually, it leads me to a question off of what Dennis said. Do you do any types of like professional legal writing or any other facets like that for students to learn those as well?
for students to learn those as well?
Yes, so as this class is an independent study, all the students every trimester will have certain assignments that they would have to complete. It's usually around five-ish assignments. And one of those include a professional piece. And so we learn all different styles of writing. So we write a professional piece, we submit one piece to a literature magazine, short story, narrative, and it kind of just changes every year. Some of them are just reflections of the articles. And so we really, as consultants, also get somewhere and get to reflect on our own writing and experiment with our writing.
Excellent. Anyone else? Um, yeah, I did just say, I was just asking.
She responded.
Oh, okay. Do we want to try again?
I've already taken the presentation off.
Oh, okay. I said we're going to circulate that if you can. We're going to circulate that amongst the trustees. But I said thank you very much for granting permission for us to do that a little bit later. Thank you very much. Isaac, where are you? There you are, thank you very much. Sophie, thank you. Jen, thank you. We appreciate your time and incredible program. And thank you for the work, we appreciate it. Moving on to our third presentation scheduled for "Continue to Learn," and Tron Superfan, then Latch.
Shall I take the podium?
We're going to make him go to the podium. It's, we miss him on the outside of the podium once in a while, so he's giving us a treat.
Okay, thank you. So we're going to be talking about the "Continue to Learn" update. That's Noah's suggestion, he was absolutely correct. Last time we kept calling it "Return to Learn." We've already returned to learn and now we're talking about continuing to learn. As I think we've seen with the Writing Center and our work with the Leadership Coalition, we've been learning all along and we need to continue with that even though the in-person format has changed some. So we're going to talk about metrics and you're going to see at the beginning, we're going to see that certainly COVID number of metrics are up in Washtenaw County. We're going to talk through that. We're also going to talk about how we still feel like a movement towards more in-person learning. Certainly a good move and how we can still do that safely. So if you look at the dashboard, look at the top line, or let's back up one.
Sorry, it's the dashboard.
So always how this works is we have targets and then we have a middle tier. The middle column represents our last Board of Education meeting and what those numbers look like. And at the top line, there was also an in-between week, which did show that quarantining was up. And now as we're into April 13th, we do see that we have quarantining in the neighborhood of eight staff and 143 students. And you say, well, those numbers are higher. I think we knew that that was going to be the case coming off of spring break. And I'm going to talk more about how actually almost half of that centers around one school and it's not the high school. With that said, you look at the percent positive test in Washtenaw County. That has grown to the 14-day average of 6.2%. Certainly higher than we like, much better than most surrounding counties. And we'll see that in a minute. We look at the new cases per 100,000, that is high at 5.4. Still in better condition than a number of surrounding counties. Yet that is higher as we see the cases have grown as well in Washtenaw County. When we look at that bottom right column, we see that regional trend of 18.7% positivity rate and 59.8 cases per 100,000. And that represents the Detroit region. The surrounding counties around Washtenaw County all the way over to Wayne. We can go to the next one, Anna. So we look at our actual dashboard, we start on the left side. We look at number of students confirmed positive and you'll see in that column that largely there are, it is centered around the high school. But when you go down to the bottom, you look at Willamette Meadows as well and you see that there were five positive students there. So if you move over to the right side of the table and you look at the number of students in quarantine, we're going to start at the bottom, Willamette Meadows has 57 students in quarantine. It's largely based around the concept that when it comes to close contacts at the young fives, kindergarten and first grade level, the Washtenaw County Health Department guidance is because the students are younger and harder to really maintain how close they are getting to other students and staff members, that the recommendation is to quarantine the whole class. That represents a couple of classes in quarantine there. And then you work your way up. Middle school has some students in quarantine, that's some sports as well. At the high school level, you have 16 students confirmed positive. That's representing 45 students, meaning there are a few close contacts for each of those high school students. But by and large, we have not had to quarantine whole athletic teams at this point. Certainly that continues to be a possibility moving forward. So to point this out, that we're looking at 24 students tested positive out of, you know, roughly a little over 4,000 students that are in the district in person and one staff member as well. They make up a fair number of quarantines. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about quarantining and how that works in this environment. We'll go to the next slide, thank you, Anna. This is sort of a recap from the Washtenaw County site. It's a 14-day snapshot of the number of cases, which certainly have grown. There is more COVID activity, we know all that in Washtenaw County across the state. 6.2%, 6.2% positivity rate over that 14-day span and 4% hospitalized rate. Go to the next one. Okay, so this is a chart that we are now looking at differently in terms of, I talked a little bit about how metrics are changing, I'm going to explain that more moving forward. If you look at where we're at right now, we are at one of our peaks in COVID rate in Washtenaw County, similar to where we were back in November and December. But I will say this, we've learned a lot about how spread is working in schools or is not working in schools, which we have seen, which is a good thing. So as we talk more about this, we're going to use the term "operationalizing COVID" in terms of how to still get to more in-person instruction, doing that safely, as safe as we can, still offering remote options, but recognizing that there's been a lot of value to getting back to more in-person instruction and that districts are still needing to make those decisions on their own based on what's best for students, their community, staff and so forth. And so we'll continue to talk more as we move forward with the. So I mentioned earlier how we're comparing Washtenaw County to the other five most populous counties in Michigan. And if you look, you just start at the bottom, you look at Washtenaw at 50.4 and then you work your way up in that first column, you'll see that in these other counties, that case rate is much larger. I would argue that Washtenaw County as a whole has still been doing a good job of mitigation efforts, more so than many other parts in the state. And if you work your way over to the positive test rate, you'll see Washtenaw at 7.8%. And again, this is not the 14-day average, this is just the snapshot today. That's why you saw a different percentage in that previous slide. That 6.2 is the 14-day average. With that said, 7.8 in Washtenaw compared to 22.5 in McComb. What that's largely saying is that we're doing a lot more testing in Washtenaw County. The county as a whole has done a lot more testing to try to identify sooner, quicker cases across the county and then react accordingly. Also, you look at the vaccination rate, which is the second to last column over there. In Washtenaw, 40.4% residents who have the first dose and that's leading out of all these counties as well. So it represents that many people in Washtenaw County, including an effort that we're seeing lately for our teens to get vaccinated. I know there's a lot of teenagers at the high school that are mobilizing to figure out methods to get vaccinated and that is a good thing, that teenagers are working towards that as well. Okay, so we'll go to the next one, Anna, thank you. This is a chart we've been using all along. And we've been sort of in this mode for quite some time and that we're now in that medium risk in terms of the percent positive tests. But that highest risk, we've been there for quite some time actually in that, you know, our cases per 100,000 are in that range. And again, I'm going to talk more about how I still believe there's safety in the methods moving forward with more in-person learning and then we'll continue to look at that. Okay, we'll head to the next one. Okay, so in looking at the Washtenaw County data over those 14 days, yes, there certainly is increased activity in COVID cases for students. There's no doubt about that. However, it still makes up 16% of the total cases across Washtenaw County. So I always want to just put that in perspective, that zero-to-nine-year-olds are making up 5% or 94 cases out of those 1874. Our 10-to-17-year-old range, 11% of the cases or 206 cases. Because I do think that's important that we're keeping in perspective that the biggest category is still 30-to-64-year-olds that are making up almost half of the COVID cases. We know that our educators, for the most part, are fully vaccinated, those that have been able to and those that have wanted to be, which is a fairly significant number. So we'll look at the next one, Anna, thank you. So we look at our progress indicators for more person instruction and we have a mix here. We've got about half of these metrics that are concerning and half of them that still look good as we move forward with our instructional model. Certainly our 14-day positivity rate is growing and the cases per 100,000 is high. Look at that vaccination process though and feel like that is excellent. As of April 3rd, all the educators that either wanted to or are able to have been fully vaccinated and that's certainly good in terms of spread that could exist within the adults themselves in the building. Look at the variant strand and I suppose say heightened alert. We know that the variant is part of the community, it's part of what's happening in Washtenaw County, which is part of that uptick. However, what we're learning, and I'll showcase this in a future slide, is that even though it's more contagious, overall, there's still not strong evidence that it is infecting kids with greater disease. In other words, there certainly are more reports of students being in the hospital, largely a product of there's more COVID activity going on in the community, our surrounding communities. We do know that. We look at our mask-wearing mitigation strategies. Still, when I walk through the halls, students are doing an excellent job of this. I know there are some risky areas in cafeterias, for example, when students are without masks. But from what I see at the high school, the administration has done a good job of offering tables that spread students out all the way down the hallways, outdoor dining options that I'm seeing it's taking advantage of. And as we do want to continue to spread out at the middle school, we're using both our cafeteria and our gym, at Heritage, outdoor tents and so forth. And that kind of spreading out during the most risky activity is apparent in all our buildings right now. In terms of distancing, obviously, we're bringing kids back. They're closer, there's no question. And there's been debate about the three-foot, six-foot distancing. You know, I think I mentioned this earlier in our presentation, that at the high school level, we still have a lot of classes that are 20 or below. There are some that are higher than that, but because there are a significant number of students at the high school level who are choosing to learn remotely, the classes are not overwhelmingly large at the high school in a lot of areas. In terms of hygiene, continue with that, students are doing a great job with that. Our close contacts and quarantining has certainly increased. And that concerns me, a lot of it is operational. When we talk about close contacts and quarantining, especially for elementary parents and students, it's challenging because unlike at the middle school level and high school level where students have been zooming into classes all along, at the elementary level, that's not how elementary teachers operate. In other words, that is not their normal cadence of instruction. They are working directly with students, still in small groups. They are providing a lot of individualized sport and moving around the classroom. And the concept of them being tied to the computer to try to zoom in kids when they're out is challenging and does not work. Therefore, students that are quarantined, if it's not the whole class, they are having to get additional material sent home and the teachers are trying to keep kids caught up when they are quarantined. That is certainly hard. Could argue it's almost easier when a whole class gets quarantined at the elementary because then the student, the teacher is still teaching remotely to the whole class, providing the art instruction. So the quarantining at the elementary level has certainly been challenging, no question about that. And we continue to work through that. In the last category, you'll notice how it's very large and that's intentional because, you know, I talk to Nurse Karen Hervey, district nurse, all the time about this. And we talk about this being the most important factor that we're dealing with right now. Even with the variant and even with increased cases, when our students are testing positive, they're largely testing positive outside of school, in the community. And even if they're back in school, yes, it may result in close contacts and some quarantining, but the actual in-school spread has been virtually nonexistent. Now, we're monitoring that all the time. This certainly could be changing, but as we move forward and we've monitored this for over a year now, we are feeling confident that we're not experiencing significant school spread. And so what that really means is the increased quarantining is what we're having to deal with largely as a community as a result of more in-person instruction. Okay, Anna, thanks, to the next one. Okay, so I talked a little bit about this already, but in analyzing all our schools, the number of cases we have, we've had hundreds of cases now over the course of the year, hundreds of close contacts, no strong evidence at all of school spread. Now, people say, well, what do you mean by no strong evidence? Nurse Hervey and her other teammates, they do do a lot of detective work. It really is that. They're going in, they're looking at videos sometimes when kids, where are they going, classrooms? And they're monitoring all this closely and they don't feel like there's any, little to any evidence that it's spreading in-person school. Now, there is discussion about how it's spread during athletics, but not so much the playing of sports themselves. Often that students are hanging out after an event, carpoolsing, getting together on the weekends. That has seemed to be more of where we're seeing that play out than the actual playing of the sport. So we talk about our mitigation strategies and mask-wearing, distancing, to the extent possible, hygiene has certainly worked in terms of what we were saying, very little evidence of any in-school spread. Thanks, Anna, to the next one. And so here's some comments, same from, I had these in our last presentation, with the classroom environment itself, has it been a strong signal for outbreaks? Yes, there are some that are happening in schools, but the classroom itself is not a strong indicator. And it tends to be more other activities associated with school. And again, they talk about sports, but we're talking about often the activities that are associated with sports and not the sports themselves. And so that distinction that classroom-based transmission exists but relatively rare shows us that, you know, we can keep moving forward with in-person instruction. Certainly, we're needing to monitor it closer, we're needing to be more responsive. We're talking to the community about how we're working week to week now, which is challenging, but we still feel confident moving forward that we can be successful. To the next one, Anna. Okay, so let's talk athletics and testing. So when students were coming back from spring break, on Friday, April 2nd, we tested 246 of our Celine High School students and two tested positive. On Monday morning, as students were coming in, athletes were coming in early, we tested 270 student athletes at the high school and zero tested positive. That's a way less than 1% range there. Now, as we come off spring break, we were concerned that when we tested on Friday, April 9th, which is the most recent testing, would that show the three-to-five-day range that the CDC recommends for testing? And we did even better with those results. 572 athletes, at this time, it was both middle school athletes that are ages 13 and up and our high school athletes and some of our community ed programs also tested students and way less than 1% here for. and way less than 1% here for athletic testing. Okay, so now we're talking about operationalizing school during the pandemic. We're going to first talk about what families and students want. Well, as indicated from our latest survey, when we redid all of this at the end of second trimester leading in the third try, we had before that 70% of our families wanted the in-person model and 30% wanted all virtual. That shifted to 80% requesting the in-person model and 20% still virtual. And we were clear at the time that, you know, physical distancing of six feet was certainly going to be harder in this environment, and we made sure that the community knew that. And we say that most families are okay with these risks associated with more in-person instruction, even though increased quarantining does provide many issues for students, families, and teachers. We recognize that, and we're working through that. And we also wanted to make sure that we were providing families and students with remote learning options, which we've continued to do all along. And we have also pivoted on parents, students that have recently said, hey, I want my child to drop back into remote. Yes, we are making those accommodations. That's definitely happening at the middle and high school level, and in some instances, elementary, but more, more so at the middle and high school level. To the next one, Anna, thank you. And so we talk about the metrics changing, because people have been critical at times of, well, it seems like we say this one week and then we say this week. We find that the metrics are changing all the time. We're getting different guidance all the time as we work through this as well. And, you know, when I'm on calls with other Washtenaw County superintendents, that's largely part of our conversation, but what do you think about some of that? Well, that just changed, and now that guidance has changed, how are you handling that? So we're all talking through that as these metrics do change. And I'll give you an example, like Washtenaw County Health Department has really moved, at least in their last meeting, to talk about how do we move from lockdowns to further mitigation strategies in schools? With the idea that, yes, we're in the middle of a COVID pandemic, but we learn more about it, and how do we move towards more mitigation strategies versus trying to figure out ways to keep students out of school? And you look at that second bullet, we talked about initially the purpose of lockdowns or less in-person instruction was to protect our most vulnerable population, which initially was elderly, medically at risk. And this population has been largely vaccinated. When we look at cases across Washtenaw County, 65, 65 and older is only representing 6% of COVID cases, which says something. Our most, our oldest population has gotten vaccinated and is seeing that vaccination works as a whole. At least at that level, we've certainly seen that. There's no question that the variant activity is more contagious. Talk about it being 50 to 70% more contagious, meaning, you know, you're outside, or you're in households and one of the masks on, it would be easy for it to move through a household. With that said, it's not necessarily causing more severe illness. And I know we've seen some accounts of kids being in hospitals, if there's more COVID activity, that's true. However, you know, you look at this from Johns Hopkins, it was published with no convincing evidence that any of the variants have special propensity immune factor cause disease in our students. So even though it's more contagious, we're still recognizing that it's not necessarily that young kids get more sick when they're, when they're testing positive as, as we're moving through this. To the next one, Anna, thank you. So let's, let's talk again about quarantining, how increased quarantining is certainly an issue. There's no doubt that it is, because it's inconvenient for students that are quarantined. It is a little harder to access the educational element, especially at the elementary level. And so we're certainly working through that. And there have been some times, unfortunately, where I had a family or two, had two students that had been infected by quarantine. And now, because the variant is in the community, the quarantine is 14 days, previous is 10. So we're still working through that as well. But we look at this, no in-school spread, very little evidence of Not necessarily daycare, but think about this. If students, if parents, many parents are needing to work on a regular basis, and often students are left home and they're not able to get the access to supports when they're learning virtual. And so I think that's really an important consideration that we have, especially for students that just don't have access to parents that are home, because they certainly do need to work. And then it's also a chance for kids to get help and meals, access the internet and other vital services. Okay, so, so here's where we are right now. It's a Tuesday, April 13th. We are in four days a week at our young five to eighth grade programs. Alternative, alternative high school and young adult program continue with their in-person model as well. And that everyone who is elected to remain in the remote learning option is doing so. So in high schools, in a hybrid schedule for one week, we have a kind of wild testing schedule going on anyway, as it relates to PSAT, SAT, and verb keys. And as a result, it made more sense to move to hybrid anyway. We could let some of those cases settle down a bit and also still continue on with our testing, because if we didn't test this week, we're going to have to test on April 26th anyway. They moved another date, so ultimately, we're working towards that. On Friday, April 16th, we're going to do another round of COVID testing on our athletes, both those at community, at the middle school and the high school. And we're going to monitor that case count closely, because we do feel like, we know not everyone plays, is not in the sport, but, you know, there's been a lot of focus lately at the high school level, and we feel like that is a snapshot of likely what's happening with, you know, all our high school students. And so we're going to be taking a close look at that. And then assuming that data looks manageable, as we talk about how, how kids are testing, that our intention would be that we're back with the four-day-a-week full in-person model for the next week. And then we keep assessing Friday, expect another community response from me on Friday evening, late afternoon or evening, after I have a chance to sit down with Nurse Hervey, our athletic director, Andrew Parrish, the administration, so that we can look at how that, what was the result of the testing on this day? And then make some decisions moving forward on to how we're going to be messaging all of that out. And then the last side, Anna, is talking about how we continue to work on summer programming. We, we are identifying students that we feel need additional support, not only for academics, but for loss of engagement. We've seen some loss of engagement where students, you know, because they've been in a hybrid model or remote, that the motivation and engagement, especially for some of our elementary students, has waned, and we want to capture that and be able to provide options. And then in fall, you know, our, our full intention is to be five days a week in personal instruction when we begin in school. Okay, so that's it for me, questions?
Somebody wants to hit. Thank you. Appreciate the presentation.
I do, um, the end of February, at the board table, we had a, we were introduced by trustee Miller earlier, who wrote by microphone and led church about putting that data, faces on data. And I was looking at that, was it Heritage or Harvest, I can't remember, had 10 positive cases. Was it Woodland? And I'm wondering, do those kids receive counseling at all or any sort of sense of looking after their emotional wellbeing after, you know, they've been vigilant for eight, nine, 10, 12 months, and suddenly they get COVID? It must have been a shock, and I'm just wondering if there's, if that's a
Where families have done everything under the sun to make sure that their kids are protected. And it, it does just happen when, you know, if there's any community contact, it certainly can happen. And she walks the family through that and certainly makes them feel more comforted that, hey, this is part of the process, unfortunately, as we deal with this pandemic. And then we also have our school social workers available to talk to students that are in that spot. Like the elementary school, they also would maintain their caseload if any of those students were being quarantined or if any of their students were testing positive, that they're able to provide that guidance and counseling and make sure that they're staying engaged and not feeling bad about it. Because I do think that's a, that's a good issue that trustee McVey is, is bringing up. You know, the kids and the families know that if some, if, you know, one of their students tests positive, it's impacting other students, and, and they feel bad about it. We're, we're all trying to be supportive of each other in this time, and I do think that it's important that we provide additional support for kids and families that are, that are going through that.
I appreciate the
All right, just a couple of questions. I wonder if you may speak a little bit about how the number of school were because of the number of students enrolled in that area. And the decision was to hybrid the high school. And I know that there was another, the testing windows, there was some factors involved in that. But the decision was made to hybrid the high school, but not the Woodlands, even though their numbers were higher. I wonder if you might just address that a little bit further.
Yeah, well, we've, we've talked about the importance of first getting our youngest learners back. So the belief at that level, because we were actually, again, those were two unrelated cases. They were two different classrooms, and they were some of the youngest grades, young fives first, or young fives kindergarten, first grade. And in this case, because the whole classes were out, they were still getting complete contact and full contact with their teachers to be able to work through that timeout. I think we would have felt this was a little different if we had widespread cases going throughout Woodland, and it was having, you know, five students in this class, six from this one, five from this one. That is deemed as to be way more disruptive in the learning environment than if a whole class were out in this case. And so those are decisions that we're making moving forward, with still the belief that overall, parents do understand that this is challenging and that there is that chance that their child's going to be quarantined if there's positive cases in classes, and still feeling that the right path is to move forward with four days a week of in-person at the elementary level.
That's really clear, that makes a lot of sense. Thanks for providing that. And then the other thing that I was curious about, I know that we talked a bit about how when an individual student or cluster student tests or quarantined at the elementary, that can be really difficult, because the teachers, I personally, it's really difficult to teach online in the first person setting basically. And in the past, teachers have traditionally sent some paper packets, things like that for students who were going to new school as a choice, like, because they were going on vacation or sporting events, something like that. But in this case, we're asking for them to quarantine or help officials are asking for them to quarantine. So beyond the paper packet, paper pencil packet, I mentioned social workers are available, but is there, is, is there a chance, for example, like, is CSO, are teachers still thinking, so teachers, so kids are getting instruction? And not just assignments? And is there that maybe the instructional designer can help sort students that are currently quarantined and some contact picked in the classroom? So just wondering if there's a way that can make that product a little bit more responsive to students that are over or under teachers or are all tested?
Yeah, I mean, it's certainly not ideal, there's no question about that. Trust me, Miller, in terms of how we do this, there is a constant conversation with the building principals and the classroom teachers about how to still keep kids engaged when they're quarantined, and how do you still have contact with students? And can it be CSO, are they able to access some of their specials classes? As a lot of those are videotaped in CSO and keep students engaged. I will say it's a challenge. I will say that if we're still quarantining students in the fall, if, you know, this pattern continues, and that's, that's what we're going to do, we are going to have to come up with better systems to support as we continue to work through that, because we always want to be better at it. And I know that our classroom teachers want to be better at it. But I, I know that what you're saying is true too, and that, you know, they're definitely trying to figure out how to keep those kids engaged that are in the classroom in person, still provide those supports outside with the knowledge that the, you know, the possibility of them zooming those students in just doesn't really exist for the way they teach. And so it's an ongoing process to work on that.
Well, I just want to say that for the record, I'm not advocating that, and because it's very, very, it is not, it's just not a great call. But I know, I know a lot of really, really big, big, big children, so I'd like to, you know, keep supporting them anyway. You know, now or in the fall, to help, you know, implement, implement a way that students can better access if we are continuing things on quarantine. And I also want to just say that for the record, that I know more teachers are working harder than they have ever before. And you have said this for months, it continues, and in fact, it's even, it's even increased as the year has gone. And so I just want the teachers to know that not getting any more work done there. It's almost like the working, working smarter than others, I just want to help support that, not just that we're going to go more and more in their place.
Yeah, I think involving instructional designers and touching base to make sure that they're providing those additional supports is a good idea.
Thank you very much, Colonel Grant.
I have, I just have, I just have one question. So it tends to quarantine. How often are you engaging in conversations with the county health department? Because if we're not seeing these students-to-students, or staff-to-staff, and staff-to-student spread, how often are you engaging in those conversations where we might modify our quarantine procedures, but we don't end up quarantining to what we don't need to?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question, trustee Hervey. It's something that Karen Hervey has, I mean, she's in daily contact with the health department, because they're working group procedures together, and there's a lot of guidance that has to happen. When it's an athlete that tested positive, that's a different method of trying to figure out the contact facing versus if it's a host traitor. I think we've had a lot of conversations about that, that is there a different way that quarantine needs to be done? And I think a lot of it is about the ability to keep up with it, the ability to, it takes a ton of time, and Karen and her staff spend countless hours trying to figure it out in a way that it is minimizing the quarantine. Or they're willing to put in those additional hours to try to figure that out. But it's a good point, should we be having conversations about doing the quarantine differently? I think that happens when we get into the next week, to be honest. But right now, you're in the middle of it, it's the process that's developed, and at large, they're sticking with it. And again, are making some modifications based on the variant and how many students are out.
Any other comments? Susan?
I think Anna will leave mine on.
Go ahead.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yep, yep.
Okay, so I had a couple of questions. So given the current indicators, which I saw as medium, high, risk was high, and we are continuing to go, you know, the route that we're going with full in-person, what indicators, are we going to create different indicators or what point with the indicators are, would we change trajectory? That makes sense.
Yeah, no, that's a, that's a good question. So the, you know, as we move forward, we look at indicators being if we were to have, you know, the governor do a mandatory shutdown, that would be an indicator for us. What we're finding is we believe we can operationalize this even when our numbers are higher because we've had discussions with the Washington County Health Department that have gone like this. You've said you feel like this is putting our kids in much greater risk by being with more in-person instruction. And the answer is no, it's more quarantine that you're going to need to deal with. And you as a district have to decide if you feel that you have the ability to keep up with quarantine in a close context. That's more of that latest efforts on talking about mitigation versus greater lockdowns.
Okay, my second question or comment, I guess, commenting questions. So today in Michigan, there were 8,867 new cases, 74 deaths. Michigan, if you often watch the news, has highest or one of the highest COVID rates in the U.S. And last week, Governor Whitmer gave schools an option to do two-week suspension of in-person high school classes and to suspend all youth sports during that time. So with that, the last point with Governor Whitmer, what has, I know that we were doing hybrid, correct? With the high school for one week?
Correct, one week. And then we will be past two weeks after spring break after that.
And then all youth sports, have we moved towards that at all?
No, I'll address that. I'll start with the sports. So when the athletic, when the voluntary shutdown of youth sports for two weeks came, what we immediately did is got on the Washington County Superintendent's call and we asked around the county, how is your athletic testing coming along? And every district that we spoke to said that we have less than 1% of our athletes testing positive. And the general line of thinking there, Trustee Estef, was that it seems like we would be punishing our athletes or let's say penalizing them for largely doing a good job with mitigation efforts. When you have only one out of 572 athletes test positive, it didn't seem like as a district we could justify putting that pause in place, even though I think there are other districts around the state that could justify it based on their testing numbers. We did not feel like we were one of them and nor did the other Washington County schools. As it relates to dropping back into hybrid, we had already gone one week after spring break and now we were into our second week. We felt that it was important to move on with our testing. We also knew that our quarantine at the high school level was not, I guess I'd say unmanageable. Yes, we had 18 students who tested positive resulting in 24 close contacts. But, you know, moving forward with a hybrid model seems safe and we knew that we had a choppy schedule anyway with testing happening on Tuesday and Wednesday, meaning a lot less students were in the buildings. And then we reassess going forward on this Friday.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions or comments? No?
Just a simple one. So based on the numbers, you've said that there's not really an indication of spread in the schools. So would it be accurate to say that the spread is happening within the community and the members out there?
Yeah, I do think that that's accurate. I mean, we're not
Can you repeat his questions, sorry?
Oh. You want to ask it again?
Yeah, I just asked, so it's like there's not much, any spread in the schools if the spread is happening out in the community.
Yeah, that's a good question. Yes, we believe so. Because there's no question that there is more COVID in the community, no doubt about that. But what we're believing is happening is that the spread is taking place when students are getting together in each other's homes or that their, you know, families are doing activities when they're not practicing mitigation strategies or a variety of different events. There are some indoor youth sports that we've heard have contributed to some of this, not connected with the schools. But there's certainly no debate that there's more COVID activity. What we're feeling based on our data, I shouldn't even say feeling, what we are seeing based on our own data is that we're just not seeing the in-school spread. And again, this is a changing event going on every week. And when Nurse Hurley and I talk weekly, almost daily, I am asking those questions. So for those 18 cases at the high school, my first question is, are all those unrelated? She said, yeah, we have 18 different students testing positive in different places in the community. And that resulted in some close contacts. But those, it wasn't as if there were one of those 18 tested positive and then, you know, another eight in the school have gotten that from spread. That's a good question, though.
Thank you all. Any other questions or comments?
That sounds good. I continue to be proud of the diversity of all of our staff, whether they're a teacher or person, all of our students, whether they're a teacher or person. Yeah, all of our social administration staff. Karen and everybody is working really diligently, really appreciative. I personally just want to comment on the athletic testing numbers. I am amazed and the low data on that side, I love it. It's a real test of our athletic staff, our coaches and all of our students. So thank you very much.
I'm going to move next to our people. Susan, can you? Just a little hybrid. I'm going to move next to our forward scheduled report, Finance Committee report from Trustee Valenti.
Thank you. Finance Committee met this afternoon at 5:00. Some of the issues that we continue to monitor are bond issues, both Series Two and Series Three. Just to remind all of you, Series Two is for the most part been exhausted. We have about $300,000 left in Series Two. Those are not big projects. We look through the spending that money though in the coming months. The Series Three closes, that's the one that is yet to be issued, is closing April 27th. We'll see it later on in our agenda here. That's the 13 and a half million dollars. That money will be spent most likely in 2022 and beyond. The biggest, the bulk of that will end up in the middle school projects. Not all, but the largest single category will be there. Other issues that we are continuing to monitor is our COVID funding. And one of the things that we have to keep reminding ourselves with this COVID funding, first of all, we have not received all of it by any means. It's still working its way through Washington and Lansing. But we have to keep reminding ourselves, these are one-time funding dollars. You cannot start to look at this as to use it as part of our operating budget to a significant degree. So we have to look more long-term planning with those dollars. Other things that we're looking at is, of course, our current budget, student counts, we're continuing to monitor that. We're going to know a lot more in the next 30 days as we go through school of choice and we get more information, more data on potentially returning students to our district. But that's going to be a great influence on our revenue that we get from the state, which, as we all know, budgeting is always filled with uncertainty. It's even more uncertain now. It hasn't changed at all. We don't know what, how that's going to work out. But those are the issues that we are continuing to monitor. Committee members, anything else?
Thanks, Dennis. Any questions, Aravati?
So my question is, is it possible to just have a summary for us to look at when we have the just kind of the key twelve items, just to keep in mind, if nothing else? And we look at it when the Assistant Superintendent Miranda brings over, get on account payable. But things to keep in mind, so just similar to the recent law that we're going through and how we decided to do more 20 hours of instruction, just something to fit in front to see what we're tracking against, especially all the work you've been in the finance committee, if we can follow along with it.
Sure, I think we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, great. Dennis, we're going to continue with you for our last scheduled report, Superintendent Search update.
Sure, there's more for our listeners and our community. The board had our superintendent search meeting where, on April 8th, to review all of our applicants that we had. We had numerous applications for the superintendent search. This board spent nearly five hours reviewing, discussing, deliberating on those applicants. I feel like we really did a very good job in reviewing those, doing our fiduciary duty for the district. We narrowed it down to five excellent candidates, which we'll be having back for in-person interviews on Monday, April 26th. We'll have two then, Monday night, starting at 5:30. Wednesday, April 27th, starting at 5:30, and Thursday, the 28th, at 5:30. But I just want to applaud or appreciate fellow trustees in terms of the amount of due diligence and the discussion that went on in looking through all of these. I think we have five excellent candidates that I think we can all be proud of. So again, we'll have those on the 26th, 27th, 28th with final interviews taking place May 5th.
Yeah.
29th, thank you. 26th, 28th, 29th, thank you. Yeah. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And I know our superintendent search website was updated today. Thank you, Anna, right now. So you can see the photos, current titles and names of the five first interviews on our website. And there's also a press release there if you'd like a little bit more information. Anna will be also communicating to the public specific details around those meetings. So you can either watch in person possibly and/or stream and/or Zoom. We are working on all the logistics. Susan and then Aravati. Oh, wait, wait. Can you hold on a second, Susan? Okay, go ahead. I got the audio.
Did you mention how many candidates that we looked at?
I did not state how many total candidates we have, but there were 18 candidates that we had in total.
We, six, six of those didn't submit their application, I believe. So we had 12, right?
Susan, I'm going to take that offline.
Okay.
For the number of candidates who applied?
Yeah, did you have a specific question around that?
No, I want the public to know how many candidates that we have who submitted applications.
Okay, I think we might be getting into an area that was discussed during closed session. So I'd be happy to confirm the number. I don't have the closed session contents in front of me. I'd be happy to confirm that and we can publicly put that on the website if it's not already there. Any other questions or comments? All right, thank you. I would like to, oh, I'm sorry.
I was going to ask, we could motion recess for five minutes, two hours.
Yes, yes. We wanted a motion to recess. Thank you. And Jenny, second, thank you. We're going to take a five-minute restroom break because we'll write it about two hours. Anna, if it's possible to put up a slide?
Do we need to roll call?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, you are. We need to roll call for the motion to adjourn for roughly five minutes. Trustee Valenti?
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Futzwein?
Aye.
Thank you. Secretary Estef? Thank you. Trustee Gerby?
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee McVeigh?
I'm vice president.
Trustee Miller?
Aye.
Thank you. President Stubben, I motion carry 7-0. We are going to take a very short break so we can stretch legs and use the restroom and we'll be back very shortly.
Yeah.
President Stubb. You're almost there.
Is it 30, Grill? Sorry, as President Stubb had articulated, the issue at hand were some of the dynamics in play relative to the changes that occurred after April 1st, when we were allowed to have public meetings again in the state of Michigan. And some of the restrictions were lifted relative to the number of people who could be present at those. Concurrent with that is a state of emergency that has been declared in Washtenaw County. And so, we are in a position where we anticipate having hybrid meetings for this particular period of time from now until probably December 31st or so, when the executive order, sorry, the state of emergency were to expire. And so, we sought guidance from Collins and Blah to talk about how to handle those meetings that occur during that timeframe, including closed sessions that may occur in that timeframe. So, the document we have comes from them.
Great, thank you. Any discussion or comments on the sub resolution? Yeah, Susan? Oh, wait, hang on.
Turn up the volume.
Oh, okay. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so, a couple of things. So, I was going to motion, but I'm not right now because there's some other things. Because it reads resolution, move to approve the resolution approving electronic meetings and electronic meeting procedures. When the resolution says resolution approving procedures for electronic meetings. So, if, so when you move forward, I do have a couple of clarifying things that I would like answered. So, there was reference in a couple of spots of Section 2, Paragraph E. So, Section 2, E, 3, 2. And so, and I could point you to the three places, I believe.
Yeah, okay, okay, Susan, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to follow along. So, on your first, your first comment, we can come back to that, but we can change the language so it mirrors the exact title of that resolution. So, I agree with you.
Okay.
And then, the next one is item, so we're on the second document that starts line area schools Board of Education Electronic Meeting Procedures, and you're at number 2?
No, so if you're looking at the actual procedures. Flip to page 2, and under B, there's a paragraph that starts an individual board member. So, it refers to except as provided in Paragraph B, 3, 2. And I'm unable to find that reference anywhere. But it's listed a couple of times throughout the document. So, I'm hoping you all can clarify. I checked the OMA, our policies, and this document, and did not see Section 2, Paragraph B, 3, 2.
Okay, can you still hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So, I'm trying to find exactly where you're at. So, if you're in the board packet, I'm on page 13, or what page are you on?
It's page 16.
Is that 16?
You don't read 16.
Susan, what page are you on? We're trying to get everything on the same page. Literally, we're trying to get everything on the same page.
You don't read 16?
I only have, I read it on just that piece.
It's 16.
So, I'm not sure.
Okay.
It's not the resolution, it's the document that comes after the resolution where it outlines the actual procedures.
Okay, perfect. So, trustees votes Wayne and Miller, I think it's on page 16. Who talks so quiet?
So, the second page of that document.
Yeah, page 2.
I was talking to you.
Small product meeting procedures.
I got it, I've got it. Okay. Under B, an individual board member seeking to participate in a meeting electronically except as provided in B, 3, 2 above.
It's also under Section 3 there, number 2, it makes reference to the same thing. And then, under the next, so the next page. In B, notice to board president, it also reference that, and C. And I don't know where to locate it.
Okay, great. Hang on one second, I mean, we know where you're at right now. Okay, go ahead.
We believe it's a squirmener's error which should read A, 3, 2. And that's a very tough page, 16. Which basically says that anybody within the affected area has the right to be remotely registered. So, it's there, this label is B, and it shouldn't have been A.
So, then, is that?
Oh, hang on. Okay, Susan, go ahead.
It's saying it should say A, 3, 2. And under that, it says all members of the board, as well as the public, may participate electronically if the board usually holds its meeting in the affected area.
Okay, so I'm looking in here and seeing if we can get possibly a fresh document. We could move forward with altered language on this particular document if we swap out B, 3, B parentheses 3, parentheses 2. And swap that up with A, parentheses 3, parentheses 2 throughout the document. And we would have to have to phrase the motion as such as well.
And that's not the only one. Because on page 3, it refers to Section 2, B, and/or C. And I don't see a C in Section 2.
Okay, we're coming up on that. Is that notice to board president, a board member who will be participating?
Yes.
Okay, hang on one second.
Exactly.
Okay, great. So, what I'm hearing is it should be Section 2, A and/or B. A, sorry, A and/or B above must provide, notice to board president, at least 24 hours before the scheduled meeting. So, it looks like we have replacement of the B through 2 language in all places. And we have replacement under B, notice to board president, to instead read 2, A and/or B. Okay. Susan, did you have others?
I do. I'm, I'm wondering why there is a resolution to approve procedures when we have, well, for one, it references Open Meetings Act. For two, there was lots of references to our board operating procedure. So, I'm wondering why we wouldn't go the route to create a board operating procedure with an amendment for this year versus seeking legal. I don't, I would like to know how much, if these are additional costs or legal. And then, yeah, I'm just curious, like resolutions really, I feel like you're making, you're deciding on something or making a decision, and so, I'm just curious.
So, I cannot speak to cost because that would be a question for Dr. Lodge or Assistant Superintendent Ellis, so we can get to that in just a second.
Okay.
I can tell you that as a board president and as a trustee in the past, I take advice from counsel extremely seriously. I'm not an attorney, but I do my best to uphold the trust of the public. And when I am, when I receive documentation from central administration that is a recommendation from the attorney, of course, I review it and take it very seriously. I appreciate your edits. I do think that in this case, because we're in a very, this is my personal opinion, because we're in a very volatile environment right now with regards to the pandemic, with regards to schooling, board meetings, and constant, constant state of change, as I would say this year. I appreciate the suggestion of counsel wanting to put something on the books quickly so that we can, we can operationally as a board. I think that's incredibly important. I do feel that having a delay in terms of putting something through committee and doing a first reading and a second reading, this is the second hybrid meeting we had within one week without guidelines around the remote term meetings. And so, I can personally say that that's how I approached this when this came to me. Kurt, did you want to speak to any takes of the cost or to any other?
Sure. As you know, boards.
In addition to the affidavit and closed session that you wanted me to sign.
Anything?
Yeah, let's go to the cost question from Assistant Superintendent Ellis.
As you know, I'm sorry, do you have something else to say?
Kurt, you need to unmute. Number 1 or 2.
I can't hear Kurt, I can't hear you.
In terms of cost, as you'll, as you'll remember as a board, you do approve the use of two law firms on the annual basis to be on retainer. In our case, it's Trum Law Firm as well as Collins and Blah. When we do seek guidance for that, we are itemized and billed for that. We have to provide a copy of what that is. We get billed on a quarterly basis for that stuff. And I do have to provide you with a copy of not only the spend for these particular ones, but of all of the fees that we incur throughout the year. It's not just this one that we're seeking guidance, a number of other issues come up throughout the year. As far as these procedures, to be clear, they are for anybody who is going to attend. Everybody has the same right to attend electronically if they want to. And so, the procedures would apply to anybody who attended virtually. And if the board had chosen to pursue the concept of an affidavit, that would have been for anybody who would have attended electronically.
And I chose not to sign the affidavit because I was the only one who was doing virtual. And had you all did the other resolution, that would have, the resolution would have made me sign saying that closed session, you have to sign an affidavit. So, as President Stubb had mentioned to me, that would have limited my participation, which would mean I wouldn't have been able to view the applications.
I don't believe that I ever said we're seeking to limit participation. I can clarify, the team knows, but I can clarify for the audience. The affidavit, so in collaboration with, let me just adjust the audio. In collaboration with the Michigan Leadership Institute and Assistant Superintendent Ellis, we had conversations around how we handle closed sessions in a pandemic. Dave Killipps had mentioned to me that it was something that he had not done in his tenure, either as a superintendent or as a consultant. And he wanted to inquire as to the flow of meeting, confidentiality, adherence to oaths, and the OMA and everything like that. So, I had a conversation with Assistant Superintendent Ellis, hoping for some advice on that. In turn, he went to counsel and we were provided with, I think it was a one-page resolution and attached affidavit that would be for any trustee who would be participating remotely to sign just reaffirming the confidentiality agreements for closed session. I asked each trustee their plans, and they can confirm. I asked each trustee if they would like to attend in person or if they would like to attend remotely. I heard back from the trustees, and we did have one trustee, Susan, as you know, it was yourself, who expressed an interest in being remote in light of the legal, the legal entity because of the state of emergency for Washtenaw County. I know that you also are aware of your multiple communications that I sent supporting your choice and supporting that. And we're aware of everything that we were doing to support and accommodate the request, which we did and which we move forward with for participation for all trustees and people. So, I just wanted to clarify for everyone, because I know everyone at the table knows, but everyone in the community.
And I did not sign that affidavit because I talked spoke with one of the legal councils at the NISB Michigan Association for School Boards, and they told me not to do it. And I said I wouldn't. So, thank you for not passing a resolution that would not allow me to participate. I, I, I think all of us are to the oath of office and uphold the Constitution. So, to regurgitate that information and sign it is not necessary.
Yeah, and I think, Susan, you can acknowledge that I did not put that resolution forward on the agenda for April 8th, which I was advised to do. I want to get back to the motion at hand and the resolution at hand. Did anyone else have any questions or comments that they would like to? Hang on one second, Michael?
So, Secretary Eastern, oh, sorry, am I muted or not?
You're good now.
Secretary Eastern does raise an interesting question as to where that document lives. Is it in our board operating procedures as a temporary thing until the end of December? Or is it an appendage to our board policy? I really don't care where it lives. I think if that's more attached and relates more to policy, 167.1 or 2, whatever it is, in our board policy. So, I'm just curious as to that. And the other part of the question is, what are basically why is for us all to sign the affidavit and keep them on file, something that we are, if either of us, any of us needs to stay in the month, we have the document prepared and it's on file just in case. Just covering our bases, what they call an overabundance caution, correct? That we're doing things correctly and we still have the trust of the community. So, the first part of the question was, where does this thing live if we approve it this year? Any idea?
Yeah, that's a, that's a good question. I would recommend, we had discussed in the past, having a resolutions area on our website. It's something, Susan, that you had suggested. I would be comfortable with that. I would also be comfortable attaching it as a temporary board operating procedure. And the committee, the policy committee can make a decision if that lives with the policy that you had mentioned. I think it was 167.2, you could make that decision. I just wanted to be aware, Jenny and Ramona, like, if you had something, I didn't want, I see nodding and different things. I didn't, I didn't know if everyone can see or if you'd like the opportunity to speak.
No, I was just going to respond to Vice President McVeigh's mention of signing the affidavit. And I think that what the counsel at NISB communicated to Susan was that our oath of office makes it so that we don't have to sign that affidavit. But if we want to confirm that, I'll agree with that. But I think at this point, the oath of office supersedes the need for the signature of the affidavit. There's no explanation that I have, it's most reasonable.
Right, and so, just to clarify, the motion on the table right now is not the affidavit.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, okay. Yeah, that is, that is not forward. Uh, Ramona?
That was my question. Do we need to put the affidavit, are they really here? So, we give a friendly amendment to the motion on the floor. Think I've got this, that's, with three things, right? To suggest, the correction, I guess, the type of amendment for, the type of amendment major for the first part. The second type is, I need to add the affidavit to here. The third one, we need to decide the side of the procedure. So, it's legal, back in fact, the call to policy to decide the side of the procedure. But that would be not a good idea if there's a draw. If there are further questions, additional challenges, or reservations. The resolution, there are different, completely impossible to determine.
Okay. So, Ramona, what I'm hearing is a friendly amendment, if those are three components that we can restate, is that?
Actually, no.
Okay.
I think that we should vote on the resolution. I think we should vote on the resolution as all as presented. And then, does vote on board or vote on procedures separately? Because we're adopting an emergency operating procedure, but it should only go back to calls to the five board in residence.
Okay, Susan, did you hear that?
Do you want to repeat that, Susan?
I, so I was looking at, I don't know if we would need to amend the motion that I would like to move, because you mentioned committee.
Well, before we move, anything, there's a motion on the table for a doc. And there are two things based on the conversation we're having that we're looking at. There's a resolution that defines the need for the emergency. And then, there are procedures that define how we'll handle the intent of the resolution. So, they really need to be separated out. The first part, which was the motion of the court of the resolution as a court brought to the floor, how we decide to execute it, it would leave that procedure, and then we can vote on that separately. And the amendments are suggested that fall under that. We can go back to calls to revise, whatever we want to do. But it would give us the authority to go forward and do whatever we need to complete tonight to get the business forward.
Okay, I understand. Susan, could you hear that now?
Yeah.
Okay, okay. So, we do have a recommended motion on the floor that was moved by Michael, and that was seconded by Dennis. I am going to attempt to read this, hang on one second, because I'm changing the title. The recommended motion on the floor is to approve the resolution approving procedures for electronic meetings.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry.
As amended.
Recommended motion on the floor to approve as amended the resolution approving procedures for electronic meetings. And Celine Area Schools Board of Education Electronic Meeting Procedures as advised by Collins and Blah often and submitted by Assistant Superintendent Ellis and President Stubb with modifications to replace language that states B, parentheses 3, parentheses 2, to be A, parentheses 3, parentheses 2, in all places. And to replace under the board president section. To replace 2B and/or C with language 2A and/or B. And I'm glad we're recording this so we can come back to it. I have moved by Michael, Vice President McVeigh. I have a second by Dennis, and I'm going to go to roll call. Trustee Valenti.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Bozwein.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Secretary Hirsta.
Aye.
Thank you, Trustee Kirby.
Aye.
Thank you, Vice President McVeigh. Thank you, Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Aye, thank you, President Stubb. Aye, motion here is 7-0. I now have a friendly amendment, a friendly motion on the floor from Trustee Bozwein. What's that?
For the medical procedures, procedures.
Okay, I'm going to count on you.
Sorry.
Hang on one second.
So, I'm going to put a motion to the floor for a doc of the emergency board operating procedures that allow that to be, like, by the time. I can't remember what the, what's the title of that document?
So, so what you're doing is a friendly emotion, a friendly motion to have this resided temporarily in board operating procedures, is that correct?
That's correct. So, it's, it would actually be a motion, because what was on the floor was a motion to change the resolution. But the resolution is what it is. What I, what I put on the floor is a motion to pre this procedures as part of our board operating procedures to have it as a resolution.
It does, it was contained in the first vote, though, I didn't think that.
Right, it should, it should separate it out.
Okay. So, there's a motion on the floor to approve the Celine Area Schools Board of Education Electronic Meeting Procedures as amended, replacing as we stated, as we stated, replacing under B, notice to board president, replacing the language that says Section 2, B and/or C, to read. Section 2, A and/or B. And have this temporary operating procedure resided in our board operating procedures until December 30th, 2021, or until orders are lifted in Washtenaw County.
Support.
Moved by Trustee Bozwein, supported by Vice President McVeigh. Any discussion on that? Okay, roll call vote, Trustee Valenti.
Aye.
Trustee Bozwein. Thank you, Secretary Hirsta.
Aye.
Thank you, Trustee Kirby.
Aye.
Thank you, Vice President McVeigh.
Aye.
Thank you, Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Thank you, President Stubb. Aye, motion here is 7-0. Before moving on, there was discussion of the affidavit, I believe, as brought up by Trustee Miller. Do we want to do something with it, or are we wanting to?
No, I was speaking to, to Vice President McVeigh. I think we've decided that it's not necessary for our process unless there's other.
What I heard from that discussion was that we were going to check and check.
Okay. Have we worked away?
Check and check, look and look, and maybe talk about it.
Okay, perfect. We're going to table that as a whole motion.
I heard, I heard one Trustee Miller said on the affidavit.
Okay, hang on one second.
I think what I said, I think what I said was that I was in favor of not doing it because our oath of office supersedes any necessary, or any need for an affidavit, unless we find out otherwise from NISB or legal.
And what I heard, what I heard is Vice President McVeigh agreeing with Trustee Miller.
Yes.
Okay, okay, perfect. We are moving on to our next recommended motion. I'd like to entertain a motion, please, to approve the minutes from April 8th, 2021 closed session for superintendents as to be facilitated by Vice President McVeigh. Thank you, Trustee Miller.
Second.
Second by Trustee Bozwein. And you don't have the evidence?
I do not.
Susan, do you have the seven numbered copies?
Yes, I, Vice President McVeigh was to, I will meet him and give him the packet.
Okay. Okay, and just to fill everybody in here and everybody in on the Zoom, because of the Open Meetings Act, we have to, we, it's necessary to re-follow a very particular procedure when approving closed minutes, closed session minutes. So, closed session minutes were taken on April 8th. The protocol is that they are created, they are typed up, they are printed in seven copies, one for each trustee, they are numbered at the top. Vice President McVeigh will be passing out the minutes. We will be reading them to ourselves live. And then, we voting, roll call vote on those minutes to approve, since that is the motion on the floor. And then, Vice President McVeigh will gather each copy, he will audit them, he will verify that there are seven copies in his possession. He will shred those, and he will file a sealed copy with our executive assistant to the superintendent, Betty Young. So, Vice President McVeigh is passing out all of our notes, and Susan has one, correct?
That is correct.
Susan, you have one, okay.
I've never been narrated like this before.
I know, it's, I feel like it's.
And now, I'm walking past my chair.
And I also have Betty, I have her copy here in a sealed envelope. Would you like me to bring that into session or file it with her?
Yeah, thank you. Let's see if we approve it, and then if we do approve it, then if you can give that to her after, after tonight's meeting, that'd be great, and Betty's not in yet, so.
Trustee Kirby?
Okay.
Don't expose it to the world.
Yeah, and so, I'm just going to put myself on mute. I'm going to put myself on mute while I read my copy. And then, if you need to turn your video off, always position or whatever, that's up to you.
Thank you.
So, we'll be just a minute. Um, so we'll be just a minute. Uh, is it lit for those to close session stuff? Um, probably not right here. Is it something you could ask Michael? Okay, once, um, each trustee has been able to read the minutes, um, just let me know. I am ready, um, I have read my minutes.
President Stubben, um, clar, clarifying that if there are any changes recommended, that we could go in to close to discuss them, correct? Just in case that happens.
Um, I believe so. Um, we'll, we'll first see if everyone's read that, and then we'll see if anyone has any, um, any necessities. Um, so I have read them, um. Jenny is done reading.
Brad's done.
Brad's done reading. Dennis is done reading. Ramadi is done reading. Michael is done reading. Susan, just let us know when you're, when you're ready, if you're suited.
Yes, I'm done reading and writing now.
Susan is done reading and writing now. Um, is there any discussion or, um, comments that anyone has that is pertaining to something that can be discussed in open session? I'm just looking around Zoom. Ramadi? No. Um, so the numbers, I can clarify that. The, the numbers were revealed in open session. They will be part of open session notes on, uh, for our next board meeting, uh, that those minutes are being created now by Secretary Easton. Yeah, because that came out in open session.
What, what, can I clarify?
Yeah.
So with the closed session, um, was the purpose, the purpose was to, um, review applicant materials, um, with a request confidentiality. So I don't think the number of applicants would be within the line there, but if you're making that.
Yeah, and, and so those, the contents of, uh, those open sessions will be forthcoming meeting minutes. That would be, um, part of the board packet in our next, um, Board of Education meeting. Um, seeing no other comments or discussions, I'm gonna go to roll call vote to approve the minutes from the April 8th, 2021 session, 2021 closed session for superintendent search as facilitated, seeing by Vice President McVeigh, uh, moved by Trustee Miller and seconded by Trustee Bozwein. Uh, Trustee Valenti?
Aye.
Thank you, Trustee Bozwein.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Secretary Yurstap.
Aye.
Thank you, Trustee Kirby.
Aye.
Thank you, Vice President McVeigh.
Aye.
Thank you, Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Thank you, President Stubben. Aye, motion here is seven zero. Thank you very much for following the Open Meetings Act. I know that this was a lot for, um, the closed session. Um, it, it, it is the procedure that we will follow for all closed sessions moving forward. Um, and Vice President McVeigh is currently, um, getting the copies of, uh, all of the closed session minutes in the boardroom, and he is walking over to Secretary Yurstap right now. So as soon as he will form mute, and then as soon as he is back, we will, uh, audit, and then we will move forward. What kind of computer is it?
Uh, Mac.
It's a Mac?
Yeah.
Or, or?
No, this one.
This one?
No.
No.
No, no.
No.
You want that one?
Yeah.
Would you want to thank for the call? Want me to invest in some power boards?
Thank you.
Um, Vice President McVeigh is coming back. I, I feel like I am here waiting your life. Welcome back. Um, if you can audit to be sure you have seven copies, that would be great.
Done and, um.
All right, done. We are moving on, and Secretary Easton will give the sealed copy to Betty when you see her after the meeting. Um, moving on to our next, uh, item of business is discussion items number nine, D E I Advisory Committee Policy Draft, second reading, Secretary Easton's chair. Um, I'm going to leave my, uh, for audio, and Susan, if you can hear us, please tell me what I'm gonna do, just like this.
Perfect, thank you. Oh, this is, this is a big day if we get to where we wanna get on this. Um, so, um, the D E I L C, um, gave a presentation earlier today, um, and, um, Shannon Washington had actually talked about a little bit of the history of the D E I Advisory Committee and also the D E I L C. Um, so from the board perspective, I just wanted to give a couple of dates here. So in 2019, the board authorized the creation of the D E I Advisory Committee. Um, the Board Policy Committee began drafting the policy, and 2020, in the fall, um, the first draft was introduced, um, of this policy to the board. Um, 2021, um, in March, on March 23rd, there was the first reading of a revised draft that was reintroduced. And tonight, we are at the second reading of the draft, um, which we will now discuss and possibly vote on the approval of. Okay.
Susan, I just wanted to be sure, um, I have this listed as a discussion item, second reading, there is no action item, which would be meaning no vote tonight. This is the second reading. That's, that's how I'm reading this on such a. Yeah, Vice President, Vice President McVeigh is, is on mute, but he said it would be something possibly that we would vote on next time, which is how I understand it as well. Uh, and, and so don't forget to unmute, please, if, if you're speaking. Uh, Trustee Valenti says that it is listed as a discussion item. Did anyone know? I know. Okay, I'm sorry, Susan, I was just catching you off on what was being said on the.
So should the second, are you suggesting that the second reading should have been on the consent item, Trust, Vice President McVeigh?
No, I don't believe so. I'm just saying, I agree with, uh, Trustee Valenti that this is, this is just a discussion item, we'll very likely vote on it, um, next, uh, at the next meeting.
So. So a third reading?
No, we'll just vote on it, we won't have a discussion on the item. It can, it can go into consent agenda, I suspect, possibly.
Um, is it a third reading?
It could, it could go on consent, or it could go on action, and it could be pulled off of consent by, by a trustee, like any other agenda item. Yeah, Ramadi?
I think, I think there was no understanding that the second reading would be the final vote, and that fact was not really at the last meeting, so I think it's a misunderstanding. I don't know if it was something that our board or bringing the procedures as not clarified because we're pretty much the whole board, or, but, um, since we started to exercise with all the policies, there's something that always been that the second reading would be to clarify that, then the bill to board has access to the packet prior to the meeting, and we would be voting after. So it might be a little split up of that, and having it as a set agenda, sorry, on this discussion item, if it was an action item, is it possible to make a motion at this point, taking action, acting, having it tonight, to adopt it on the board?
Um, so.
It's, it's a, it's a clarification, because I can see that as from January 1st, that was how we were stating, and it's never gonna clarify it, like, as a whole.
Okay, okay. Um, and I, I can speak for, for mine. I was told that this needed to be a discussion item and not an action item on our agenda. Um, I am not prepared to vote on this. I had, um, three or four pieces of feedback, and one of them did come from, uh, the legal red lines that we've only received today, um, that I wanted to be able to review, as we, as we discussed at the last meeting on April, or on March 23rd. Um, we didn't receive those until midday today. Um, so I was under the impression that this was a discussion, uh, item for a second. I don't know what anybody else's interpretation was.
That was my interpretation as well, particularly given that we just received the red lines. I had, I had a chance to throw it over here.
And that, and that's fine, that's what.
Hey, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Ramadi. Brad started to speak, so if we can go Brad and, and then, that's okay?
I, I was agreeing with that, uh, it's not a discussion, I, I'd like more time to review the line, or the term as well, so.
Okay, well, Ramadi, uh, just to come back to you.
And I, I think. I, I think it was just kind of, kind of, the committee and the policy situation going on. I think going forward, though, I know to be very clear, because the fact that, that three of us aren't super board, or anyone that were clear, I understand that, because some of the doctors were not present there. The goal would have been, if we had to have a tie, and if we had a petition, we shouldn't go along with that. I, I think you did that. But I think policy has some work with defining how policies get adopted, and I find that like a, a second meeting and policy. Put that with others on the phone. Let's make sure that that.
Okay, thank you, Ramadi. And I agree, and, and Michael is nodding as well. Um, sounds good for clarification for, um, the committee, uh, in the near future. Susan?
Um, can I just, um, looking at the, the bylaws and policies, um, I understand that you all wanna review the red lines. Um, I'm not sure if we have it structured, um, because it, it wasn't added to the board, specific board packet on Friday. Um, but we, so the committee met and looked over, um, and discussed the red lines March 23rd, um, before the first reading at, um, the committee meeting, um, or sorry, at the board meeting, uh, which was right after that. Um, so the red lines specifically the committee reviewed, and so, I don't know, um, Betty Young, she had an amazing, um, document with, um, what we had prior to March 23rd, um, what we edited from the red lines, or the red lines, and then what the committee edited from the red lines, and then also what, um, from your all's feedback that night as well. Um, so just to keep that in context, that the red lines specifically were reviewed by committee members, and, um, I know that it was asked, um, by Trustee Valenti, Valenti to send it to, to you all, so, um, I understand the need for more review on that. Um, can I clarify real quick with the misunderstanding with the first, first versus second reading? Um, the, the second, so the policy changes first appear on the agenda as a discussion item, um, and then if the discussion is complete, there's a sense of consensus, um, the policy will appear on a future agenda item as an action item for adoption. So, um, the request here is to extend it, correct?
Um, I, I think, I think the, I think the overall request is if something needs to be placed on the agenda from the policy committee, that the policy committee notify the interim superintendent and the board president who create the agenda. So the pa, the packet was distributed to the trustees roughly four o'clock on Friday, and this is the first time that I'm hearing that this shouldn't be listed as a discussion item. Um, I was under the impression that we were going to add it as a discussion item, and that's what, what happened, this part of the agenda votes. So I would ask, like, we've had discussions before, if there are any questions on anything in the packet, or any questions on the agenda when it goes out Friday at 4:00 P. M., that Steve and I, uh, hear those questions by end of day on Monday, so we have the time to revise the agenda if we agree to. Do, do you want to say anything about that? I'm gonna mute.
No, I do, I do think that this is also part of our learning process with the policy in that, um, discussion item versus action item, and when that vote would occur. It's definitely sounding that I, or, like, maybe more time to review your red line. And that, um, we'll be ready to be voted on after that meeting, if this is next.
Okay, I, I. I, I agree with interim superintendent. Yeah, Jenny?
I was just gonna say, for the record, that, um, I thought that the, um, procedure was that at the second reading, we would vote. Um, I just thought that that's how the policy flow worked, so that could have been on me too. And now I know, like Steve said, and our superintendent, uh, Dr. Luch said, uh, this is a learning process. So, um, in the future, I'll try and, I'll see something like that. Great, great.
And that typically, typically with the process, the board operating procedures would go that way. So the, so we would need to take discussion, consensus on discussion tonight. The policy committee will, it would return to policy committee, um, to work on. If there's any feedback between there, between that time, um, you know, send it to me, Michael and or Ramadi, um, to, um, consider it as well.
Okay, um, so do we want to, Susan, did you want to get back to meeting, um, any questions on the second reading?
Sure. Um, so one of the things that came up during our last committee meeting, um, which was a full bit, um, um, there was a request from, uh, one of the members that community be taken off, um, from, um, the members section, and, uh, because we had already talked about it at the table, and there was a, seemed to be a consensus amongst, um, a few board members that, um, we decided, um, to not move forward with that, uh, request to have it removed. So community is still there. Um, additionally, um, we marked, um, I don't know, I'm sort of like trying to find everything here. Um, we did strike, um, under recommendation, um, from the policy, um, under the membership that, um, with the Board of Education members, that, um, they do not need to have one, uh, one trustee that is on policy, um, committee as well. So that was taken out. Um, and then there was, um, some clarifying language, um, that trustee, um, Bozwein, um, suggested, and it was, it was great. Um, so you'll see on that second page, um, under the first paragraph, that there are bullet points, um, that talks about, I mean, it basically outlines that first paragraph, and so you, somebody could look at this and know exactly, um, how that process works. Um, so the selection process will be by application, the applications will be reviewed by the superintendent or designated as the board D E I committee members on a holding basis, and then if selected applicant will be notified when a vacancy becomes available. Um, so thank you for that, uh, language, um, bringing that out. Am I missing anything, Trustee Bozwein, or Vice President McVeigh on changes?
There's no. Um, just in the upper of, of, of time and, um, and, uh, being efficient, um, perhaps we can kind of either go down the table, or perhaps use our roll call vote, just to make sure we're capturing any other. Dennis is nodding, so I'm gonna use the roll call vote, because he's first. Um, if there are any other, um, uh, comments, uh, that you would like to make. he's first. If there are any other comments that you would like to make on this discussion item, we're going to go with Dennis first.
No problem.
Well, that was easy. Trustee Bo Swain?
I haven't kind of read on that.
Is it about the policy?
It's about the policy.
Okay.
If everyone's going to go through a roll call, we're not going to have any comment on what we received outside of the red line. Why are you holding this? And you'll have to pardon me a little bit for this, but if it's a policy, the point of a policy is that if we need to make a change, which we can as a board, but if we can wait another two years, how much change are we going to make? And if trusted, we need members to go through. I get that we should assess that red line earlier, but the whole, he had a presentation today, and we have committee meeting, and we sit here with three people to tell us what we can say. So I understand the need to review this further, but in two weeks, you can always come back and say, you didn't agree with me to that policy. And assistant superintendent, veteran superintendent, that was part of all of the policy committee meetings. And it took a long time. So I'm slightly disappointed. I'm slightly emotional, but I'm very frustrated by you. That's all.
Okay, I definitely appreciate your truth and then your comments around it. I think...
I didn't accept because I asked for a motion to be put to suspend. I'm sorry. I think I'm upset because I think I could have taken a motion to move forward and step away from the seat for two nights, because it affects the students to leave this district in six weeks. And I respect everyone, but I'm simply frustrated right now. So you'll have to pardon. I get it.
I understand, and I want to feel, you know, place, person, opportunity to say anything if you would like to as well.
And if we're hearing that, trustee Bo Swain?
It has always been, and if this was requested to be an action item on tonight's agenda...
It was a camera. Just I'm sorry.
No, it's okay. So what I would ask, what I would ask is that I have always requested input on agendas. Dr. Luch and I worked very hard on the agendas for up to two weeks in advance of the study as well. We try to respond to any questions when the packet goes out. We know that everyone is deliberately looking that packet over. There are many things that have come out tonight at the table that could have been questions that came in email form to Dr. Luch and to myself. Some of these were around the resolution for electronic meetings. We would have been able to alter the language on that. If someone had raised to me that this should have been an action item, we could have moved it on the agenda. In my preparation for the meeting, I realized this morning that I didn't have the red lines, which is why I mailed the board, and we received them. Thank you, Betty. You were very quick in responding. I appreciate that. I did have a few comments based on some of their suggestions and readings overall. I understand the frustration and the warning for comment. I mean, we can take a temperature at the table. I think there was no ill intent here. We all believe that there should be a diversity, equity, and inclusion advisory committee. No one is trying to hold that up. I do think that it has been very confusing coming out of policy committees, what is requested on the agenda. This is the second thing within two days that's come up.
And I agree. I guess I'm concerned to say that if we're going to go through a roll call, everyone's about to have a tally, there is no need to not vote tonight. So I'm thinking that there are comments that we have to share. If nothing else, I understand that the red line, we need to go through that. But if you're going to go through a roll call, because the fact that red lines come Friday, there should be a decent comment on feedback for policy only to go roll call, hanging on next to me, starting with whatever...
I understand. So here's what I'm going to say. I have some feedback on some of the items that I read in the red lines. I have some feedback that I had personally. I would hold that. If you guys can tell me that the policy that's sitting in front of me was reviewed by one of the law firms that we retain, and that they are good with this, then I will vote on it. If you tell me we have not had legal review this policy that we have as a current discussion item, I think we need to push it. So if columns of law or other law firms have been consulted in this, and that they equally think this is a policy that's okay, and Steve can tell me that, that I am comfortable voting on it, and if it has not been reviewed by legal in this second reading version, then I think that we need to have it reviewed. That was my biggest concern. The rest of them all.
Just like to ask clarifying questions. Do you mean, when you said, if you're satisfied with this, this is really quite a legal training, you mean the second time?
The...
Okay.
Yeah, yeah. So good question. The copy of this policy that's in the board packet, my question, because they had so many comments on the first version, my question is, has the version that's in this packet been reviewed by legal, which probably would have gone through super heard, and they don't have hand reservations with any of those as well?
I'll speak to that. So it did. But what I'm hearing from trustee Bo Swain is that the potential is to delay this further, and the concern would be that, you know, the next time, it seems that it will of the all the trustees to make sure that we are approved, so that in between now and the next meeting, we've got to really accelerate this to make sure that it is going to be approved in a separate format, so that we continue to move forward. As I hear that that's what this is, from a trustor's point of view, and like others, that we're not going to do as an action item, and now it is, there's a process to make sure that we are doing agendas that help the policy packet, making sure that we're at the right spot. And the concern is, how do we make sure that we get to that when we have the next meeting? So that we all run a good spot with this.
Steve, can you talk about, I believe it's in the red line edits that came, because at first we had gotten the red lines, and, yeah, it was a shock. But as we went through them, a lot of it is mere suggestions, and we did have the legal team come back and give us reasons. And that, I believe, is documented on what you received. So I think it's important to look at that and take that into consideration as you're reviewing, because, again, it's mere suggestions, and which I didn't think was going to come out of the review from legal, because a lot of it, they were rewriting, but it didn't have legal implications. And just to take that all in as you're reviewing it.
I actually thought some of their, I actually thought some of their suggestions were good ones, and one of my pieces of feedback was with regards to the number of members of the committee from various constituencies to ensure equity. I thought that was a very good suggestion. I disagree on some of the other things, because a committee like this is a recommendation committee, and they don't vote. So obviously, that was something that I didn't need to worry about. But I thought that that was a good piece of feedback that we should consider. And the first time this came to the table in December, it did have members attached to it, on which, how many people do we have on each constituency in order to provide equity that we don't have? I was going to pick one. We don't have too many teachers. We don't have too many middle school students, or we don't have too many, that we have some targets for this. And one of my suggestions was going to be tonight, that we try to put some target numbers to that, and then also put language in there saying, you know, these are targets and suggestions to provide equity on a DEI committee. So perhaps if we have one more, one more parent that we have high school students, I'm just picking constituencies at this point, that is the discretion of the folks that are reviewing the applications, and there could be liberties there. But I thought it was a good suggestion to have target numbers to provide equity. Jenny?
So just a couple of things. I think first, that there may be some, there may be some problems, because the policy committee was a committee, as a whole, last time. So perhaps that's why, as I watched meetings for the last year, it seemed that on second readings, things were getting a little bit. I also will just say that being new and poring through large packets, and also all the other responsibilities that are on the board right now, I missed that it wasn't an action item and was a discussion item. So I did think that because of the way that policies have gone in the past, that we were voting tonight. And I am disappointed, being on the DEI committee, that we were, we were looking forward to moving forward and to getting some things in place. Having a daughter that's a senior, I, you know, it's a legacy. I wanted to have something for those seniors who have experienced a lot of these, a lot of these inequities, and all of these incidents over the last term, I wanted something to give them. So I hope that we can still do that this month. Second of all, I would really like for, well, I guess I'll just say, in our last discussion, we did discuss the numbers, and the numbers were removed. And the reason why the numbers were removed is because there are some people, some constituents will fall into whole groups. And so we wanted that to be at the discretion of the, at the discretion of the three Board of Education trustees and the designated or superintendent. We felt that, well, I'm not in the policy, but on the DEI, we felt that the numbers could be, could actually do the opposite, and could force some selections over others that might not be the best interest of the committee. So by leaving the numbers off, but with the intent being of a balance, so to speak, that we would be able to make the best selections for diversity, equity, and inclusion on the committee meeting. I guess that's what I was going to say for the rest.
Any other on those? Michael, wouldn't you like to say something? I would appreciate your opinion, as well, from the policy committee and veteran trustee, especially with regards to...
I'm just one member of the policy committee, and I'm just one member of the school board. But it seems to me that by the time we get to the second reading, there should be almost nothing coming back to the policy committee. We've all had that, the time to read whatever materials we have, we were trying to bring back the story, we didn't get the red lines out sooner. I'm surprised, because I've gone through the red lines till I was cross eyed. So I just assume everyone else had. Sorry, my bad. I also think that it sets an argument that we need to have the rest of the board to respect the work of our standing committee. We've gone over it and go back and forth over numbers and that. I trust that we looked at it, also trust that we can take that for editing later. I prefer not to, but sometimes we have to. I have heard people challenging the decisions of the finance committee. So I mean, I understand that policy is tricky too. I just want to also remind the rest of the board that we've gone over this with care and with caution. We've had a lot of conversation, and it's not been heated or anything like that. It's been measured and thoughtful, and we've taken into account, and I have to compliment Secretary Easton on this, she's taken into account every comment that came to table about this, raised it as a question, let us deliberate, and then moved on. If everyone is feeling tonight that this is acceptable and ready to go, then I would say vote on it. But I don't think we're all quite there yet. So if you all can be patient, I can't see any reason why this does not come for a vote two meetings from now. And so move on to other business and take care of the last minute's bits. And plus, I've had a certain nerve there that I caught as well, but it's not even worth bringing up to the board. It's something I've mentioned casually to us, Secretary Easton. And we can't be labored with time with that. So we'll take into account the comments that came up tonight for sure, but I don't, and I'm sure we have to have a special policy committee meeting about those changes so we can get it up for a vote in two weeks' time. But I guess my bottom line is, everyone here on the table has to respect the work of the committees as they're authorized. So I'm not picking on anybody at the table here. I just, I want this through as frustration or not, I understand your frustration. Trustee Bo Swain, I know, so. But we really want this to, and there's the other thing too, is there's a frustration in this meeting of a whole to the new policy committee. We haven't yet figured out the steps to our policy, I mean, policies since we're working on that. That's next on the agenda. Should have been first. Thank you. I hope that helped.
Thanks, Michael. Brad?
I hope I come across, I'll tell you that I, this is an important committee. This is important work. This is important things that are happening, and I want to make sure that it doesn't come in with clear, and say that incredibly proudly, and I said earlier that I appreciate the work. But I had never seen the red line version until this morning. And so for me, and somebody who isn't on the policy committee, and somebody who had, I'm literally like trying to just analyze and look at it and try to evaluate it, like, you know, like, to be honest, I have like some real questions that I want to like process through, and I feel a little rushed to do it. For example, like, you know, I'd like to know about like, an odd number of members versus an even number of members, as is indicated on the red line version. And I was on the board in December when those discussions necessarily began. And it's so like, for me, I'm a little overwhelmed. Like, I'm just a little, like, I just, I want time with it. I want to make sure it's right. I want to make sure that it supports everything we do. But I want to be very clear that this isn't about me asking like to review these red lines. It has nothing to do with what value I place upon this committee. It just says, I didn't know what was happening right now, and that's that. I guess I'm getting a little emotional too, because it wasn't red.
Yeah, red lines are, again, typically...
Wait, hang on, Susan. We couldn't hear you. Okay, go ahead.
Oh, I was just, red lines are typically, that's why the whole committee gets to see all of that craziness. But, yeah, I think that's part of it, was that the committee received it, and so I think, you know, and that it was sent to you all is not the usual, because, yes, that's why there is a committee, because it can get daunting at times, right? So, you know, and it's understandable, again, that you saw that and was shocked, because we all were. So just keeping that in mind.
So what I'm hearing you say, and what I'm hearing trustee, or vice president McVeigh say, is that because we are not a committee at the whole anymore, we wouldn't have all gotten the red lines. The committee gets the red lines, they make decisions, and they then pass those into the board. At the last meeting, there was a request for the red lines, so I understand that that's different. But as a board, we need to work together, I think, to work collaboratively and to have trust in our, in our membership, that they've gone over those things. And I know that there will be some circumstances where we are going to want to address those. But I think that that is, like I stated earlier, the transition from the committee of the whole to a committee, a subcommittee, and that's, that's part of the growing ways. I think that's what I'm understanding from trustee, or Secretary Easton, and vice president McVeigh.
Couldn't have said it better.
Okay. So what I'm hearing is that this will be an action item, agenda item, for the next board meeting, that I believe is between 27, so we'll make sure to note that. A couple of things for me, as always, if any trustee has a recommendation for it... Um, a couple, a couple of things for me, um, as always, if any trustee has a recommendation for it, uh, an agenda item, whether it's a student showcase, or it's a discussion item, an action item, a consent item, et cetera, please get those to Steve and I, um, because we're creating the agendas. Um, please do it in a little bit of advance notice because the packet is created at 2:00 on Friday. It goes out at 4:00 on Friday. Um, we start working on these two weeks in advance. So if we have any type like committee meeting, whether it's the DEI Highway Committee that's coming down the pike, or it's, it's Finance, or it's Policy, or it's somebody else, we have something that needs to go on and we need to, we need to know about it, and we need to know what it is, um, because this, this is happening twice this, this weekend.
And, and let's clarify that, um, interim superintendent Lott, um, is at those meetings as well. So if you're planning on that, just keep that in mind.
Oh, okay, he's, he's, don't have alcohol.
Yeah, no, that's, that's a good point, Trustee Easton, and Trustee Bo Slayne, in reviewing this. Yeah, and expectation that it was an action item, that's a certain sort that I need to make sure that that is the case as well. And that I'm sorry that wasn't presented in that way, part of learning, as that's my role as well, that potentially going to review this tonight is a second reading, you go rather than first, just that. And, um, the second part of it sounds like they just need to make sure that they have that additional information going out in advance, that's been requested by our trustees, that they, they see this as, but I, I don't know. That's a area that I would work to improve and make sure that I'm on the authority, they make sure that that holds, um, expectation change, change, and, and as well, bigger, I tend to, policy meetings too, and I need to make sure that those are already made spots, and so it's going to be a agenda. So that their, their potential, laws, laws, and, and, um, going on tonight, and I have to judge for that.
And communication between, you know, you and I and the committee members and making sure that we continue that.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay. All right, so agenda items are forwarded to Steve and I for consideration on inclusion of future agendas and match with other presentations and other important district business that we have at hand that need to go on different, um, different agendas, and we will work to, to accommodate that. Um, we need to have a little bit of time also for trustees to review content. Um, the red line was requested on March 23rd, and we receive them by Monday to that day. Um, I want to be respectful of every word's family situations, careers, um, the amount of extra meetings we're doing right now for important district business that we all believe in, um, and just try to give each other some raises and time. Um, there was one other item that did not make it to the agenda, um, just so everyone knows, and I requested that Secretary Easton send it to you ahead of time, it will be in the packet next time. It's a 78-page document, um, with regards to Neowa updates. So things like that, if we know it's coming, we can get some advance and pass it and make sure it goes on the agenda in the appropriate, um, appropriate manner, and we'd be happy to do that. Um, when the packet comes out on Friday, roughly around 4:00, um, we fully expect that you'll want to enjoy your families and, and have some time on that weekend. But if you can get us, as always, as has been requested since January, if you can get us any questions that you have on either the agenda, the flow, um, the contents of the packet, if something's missing, if anything's broken, anything that we need to resolve, we will work very hard to resolve that. We would ask that those questions, um, comments or concerns come in by Monday, because that gives us Tuesday morning to try to mobilize with Betty, et cetera, to update the packet or, um, uh, update agenda, and we'll be happy to try to accommodate that. While we are also doing other jobs in district business. So it is a careful balancing, and so I think that asking for less than 24 hours in the business is very reasonable. And I would ask that if there are big documents or things to review, um, or that are requested, that those, um, that all trustees be given that time and care to be able to review those as well. Um, I'm going to move off of the-
Does legal need to review this collection before the vote?
I didn't hear that.
Oh, okay, so I can, I can hit the question, Dennis, it couldn't be answered. Um, the question was, does legal need to review the final copy? Um, my recommendation would be yes. And it doesn't mean if they come back with a bunch of red lines that we're, we're gonna, we're gonna, not set or not voted, and we're, we're not gonna do it, but-
Yeah, I'm just, I'm, for me, it's, well, I said, we had some today, so I just want to make sure that we know we're doing our part, so we go ahead and-
And I don't know if you two are being-
Okay, so Steve and I will talk about it when I get a decision tonight. Okay, does that sound good? Okay, perfect.
And interim superintendent Lott, um, I, I know you had requested some clarification from them as well, um, after we reviewed, um, I believe trustee McVeigh had, had asked a question about the OMA and how many trustees are to be on, um, to be on the committee. So I didn't, I mean, I, that may be relevant, I don't know.
Do you want to touch on that now, or you want to talk about that?
Yeah, I can just say, I, that I haven't, I haven't received the information back from them yet about that trustee stuff. I'll follow up on that though.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna be moving forward with administration updates, Dr. Lott.
I know we're in a longer meeting, I, I did want to, um, do a few thank yous tonight and congratulations for the board of that trustees. Um, I receive an MASP on a fairly regular basis, who's attending violent courses, and I think it speaks well to this idea that, you know, the district shares a lot of professional development for our teaching staff and educators and administrators, and the Board of Education models that as well in that the latest, um, letter I received is trustee McVeigh with the Master Platinum Award who's earned an MASP. Um, trustee Valenti, a certified board member award. Uh, trustee Easton and trustee Stephen, a certified board member award, or the merit and adnecity specialty. And then to many of our new trustees, trustees, you know, both Sonia Derby, starting to engage in professional development too, and it, it just shows the district's commitment as a whole to really model this, to try to be better at trustees. You know, experiencing tonight, there's some things that we're all working on to be better. That's part of professional development, whether it's related to being a board member, an interim superintendent, or a teacher, we're all working to try to be better. And I think that's, is all of your dedication, so I really appreciate that. I did want to just also point out something that I saw on Facebook that I thought was great. Dr. Michael McVeigh, in a celebration of excellence 2021, Eastern Michigan. And you know he's in the teacher education program and specifically in education and technology. And I thought this is, um, excerpt from one of his students who's like, I want to read it. It says, "Dr. McVeigh conveyed a deep commitment to students and love for teaching. His humorous, genial way of engaging, learning from him is joy. His willingness to go the extra mile, mentoring graduate students as colleagues and building personal relationships, making them most memorable as a professor." Dr. McVeigh allowed him to pursue graduate certificate. And I learned that he utilized independent studies, which now has a detrimental impact on my career, and that's been one of his strengths."
Well, thank you. I, if, if I could also note that, that that's who I want to-
Talking about where it's gonna end, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for the surprise. So it's excellent, I'm, I'm good. So I've just a couple of quick other comments I did, um, that I wanted just to thank you for educators, teachers, support staff, administrators, moving back to full person model has been challenging, but professionalism that's showing in our buildings on a regular basis is great. And I just, one plug for the engagement session that we're doing tomorrow night, 6:30 to 8:00. We have a number of trustees that are going to be attending that. That's to continue our discussions about equity with Diamond and Long, and Sensi's Associates facilitating. We expect to have breakout rooms, interactive sessions, which I think is going to be great as well. So we look forward to seeing people. It's not too late to sign up if anybody else wants to sign up by midnight tonight, so it's closing in on deadlines of speaking. Um, we still can accommodate people that are signing up for that, so we appreciate it.
Hey, just, 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 sorry, sorry, sorry. Just, I want to say to add to the comment that you, you brought up about, uh, Vice President McVeigh. In listening to these comments from your former students, uh, just because they're written by any of your former colleagues, I really, really do appreciate it, and the community realizes what it did have here.
Aw.
Can we give you a hug because?
No, yeah. That's very sweet. I, I am very proud of the fact that I got the Platinum Board Member Award. It's not just for courses taken, and courses for all the other stuff. As, as Board President, uh, Stephen is quickly figuring out, there's a lot of things that we do that could get recommended for, and it's always nice to have that on the actually, you took the Avis Award and the award merit, very good, welcome, you're catching up. That's, oh, that's right, that's right. Um, if all of us get our board, I wanted to say this is a couple minutes-
I'm gonna turn up the volume because you're out of it, but keep, keep talking because I think Susan-
If, if all of us in the board get our full board member certification, then we, for the first time in decades, can be called a certified board, a complete board. So, um, I'm, I'm not gonna point any fingers because we all-
Thanks.
But we, uh, once, once you, once you all have your nine or your eight courses under your belt, um, and, and we're close. We're close, we're so close. It'll be good. All right, no pressure though, really, no pressure, no pressure.
Do you want to, do you have any other jokes you want to add?
I got nothing.
While you're talking.
I got nothing.
He's got nothing. Anything else from the sensitive table? Anything from Susan? Anything from the sensitive table? And we're gonna go with Noah, he's gonna, he's gonna lose all of us all. Okay, so, I, I have been, I've heard, yeah.
So, Foundation, this one area is very small, and they're taking all their fundraisers. So please visit, support FSAS.org and sign up for the, um, the fund they raise that, that our district, the need has not changed at all, and it's going to hold for our teachers, our staff, our kids, for everything that's, that's, that's very, very small. So here's a part, and sure that's small, so that's a good, good part of it.
I'll try and be quicker than you. Um, so basically, all the sports teams are doing great. I had, I had teams that what they've won, but they're doing great. Um, for clubs and organizations, a lot of them have been, um, doing pretty well with regional competitions, uh, with the number of students getting first place and second place medals in both regional and state. Um, one thing I really just wanted to mention, uh, the National Honor Society, uh, next week, we'll be passing out bags around the community for our annual bag pack drive, not read, gather. School supplies that we will be making to a charity organization. So look out for those if you live near the town of Sling in the neighborhood of the band, follow the directions on the bag. Um, for COVID, just, please continue to follow the guidelines so that we can finish off the year strong, have our senior celebrations and graduation. So that's, that's it.
Thank you. I'm going forward to the consent agenda. The FALIN, or offers the consent agenda, the motion, no, no, the authorization of all listed items. Without discussion, unless a member of the board requests, but any one or all will consider it a duty. I'd like to take this as a motion and to authorize the FALIN, as part of the consent agenda. A, approval of supportive education study session meeting minutes of March 23rd, 2021. B, approval of board policy meeting meeting minutes of March 23rd, 2021. C, approval of payment of the budget fund account payable on April 13th, 2021 in the amount of $2,198,991,891. D, approval of payment of balance series two account payable on April 13th, 2021 in the amount of $1,406,344,344. E, receipt file for a grant by the community resources reports. F, approval of annual policy update date policy meeting, that 300th submitted by the board committee. And G, reaffirm our commitment to extended COVID leading learning on ASAS September 27th, 2021, and amended on January 24th, 2021. Can I adjourn the motion to approve our consent agenda?
So, so.
So, by Gloria, and second by Susan. Thank you, uh, roll, 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 trustee Valenti.
Aye.
Thank you, trustee Slayne.
Aye.
Thank you, secretary Easton.
Aye.
Thank you, trustee Derby.
Aye.
Thank you, vice president Ogenbey. Thank you, trustee Miller.
Aye.
Aye, present step in our mission, period, seven zero, um, Dr. Lott, I don't need to schedule it on our next agenda.
Yep, that would be the Continue to Learn Plan, Girls Who Code as a presentation, and Amber's Robot House.
Thank you. I would add Neil, um, Neil O'Callaghan's updated consent and the DEI advisory recommended to agenda. Uh, and Anderson G. Um, this is our second public, publicly common opportunity. A member of the public may address the board briefly for three minutes or request us to schedule on the agenda of a future meeting. Um, I will take students first, and if there is any student, um, if they could at least raise their hand. Um, and then we'll need, um, I see one hand raised, we just need a first room and a last name, and then we can call it, unless somebody has the preference of the first person that they can hear.
Do they have the ability to change their name?
Um, she should have.
Anna?
They don't.
I don't think they do. Yeah, we can't change ours, so I don't think-
No, changing, okay. Um, if there are any other public comment, uh, state stakeholders, I'm not sure if this is a possibility or a, um, a community member, so we'll just try and, um, yeah, see if this person's available to make a public comment, and then we can bring them to speak. And if you can say your name, because it's not showing up, that would be wonderful. So, trustee Stewart? Can you hear us?
You need to unmute.
Could, could be the first, first step to open the way from computer to, I think the hand had been raised for a little while. Um, the user name is Stewart, can you hear us? Okay, um, we are gonna have a public comment. Um, our next meeting, the next Board of Education meeting held on the 7th, 2021 at 6:30, 30, 30, 30, here for the board, world. Um, I would like to adjourn the meeting to a regular Board of Education meeting, April 14th, 2021, at 10:00. So, bye.
John, you guys have your round.
Did it roll?
Oh. Well done. 10:09, okay, uh, trustee Valenti.
Aye.
Trustee Bo Slayne. Trustee Weston.
Aye.
Secretary Easton.
Aye.
Trustee Kirby.
Aye.
Vice President McVeigh.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
President Stephen, Washington Series 70. Now I'm just going to do it one more time. Character. 10 on 9.